Stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
All right, a call to order and welcome everyone to the November 21st, 2022, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board, and we have a joint meeting with the School Committee and Finance Committee today. Okay. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwarko.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consisting of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know it otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given to upon arrival to the meeting. I will call in residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. Join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, invite the School Committee and Finance Committee to open their meetings.
We call the November 21st, 2022, meeting of the School Committee to order.
Finance?
Call the November 21st, 2022 Finance Committee meeting to order.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. And I will hand us over to Paul.
We've been looking at the FY 2024 budget assumptions. Historically, I've given out spreadsheets that I think people got lost in over the years, so I've kind of cut this down and just want to present what the assumptions are, the incremental numbers from FY 23 to FY 24. We can have just a brief discussion after that, you know, where I think we're going with this. As everybody knows, our sources have to equal our uses. That's just a general law where we have to have that balanced out. We are not the federal government. We cannot just print money and spend money or to that nature. And having said that, we will begin with our sources. Our primary revenue source for the town of Long Meadow, making up about 80% of the revenue source, is our is our property taxes. The FY 24 estimated calculation for the two and a half percent increase, we are going to see an increment of about $1.367 million just alone by the the two and a half percent increase. The additional $400,000 comes into play, given the Finance Committee's current recommendation. I'm not sure how the Select Board has not taken a position on it, but historically, over the last years, they've only or have had a goal of only utilizing less than the 2.5% increase. In FY 23, that amount was 1.75 of the two and a half percent, and that amounts at about $400,000. So in FY 24, the Finance Committee minimally has come up with a proposal to use 2.44 or nearly the full amount of the two and a half percent increase. So this is a carry forward that we did not use in prior years of an additional $400,000. New growth, kind of a conservative number, $200,000, given our history on this, feel very comfortable about that number annually. It's normally a little bit higher in FY 23. We did have a very good year in FY 23, got some remarkable numbers from the public utility companies. And for FY 23, that number is closer to $475,000, just as an FYI. But given that will probably not take place in FY 24, again, conservative estimate of $200,000. State aid, given the fact that the state is still doing very well with its budget and its revenues coming in, estimating a 4% increase. This is about half of what the increase was in FY 23, so one might consider that to be a conservative number. However, it wasn't very long ago, three or four years ago, where we were getting, you know, maybe $200,000 or less in additional state aid per year. A lot of that money is coming in on the Chapter 70 line item. And again, going back a few years ago, we might have been getting $30 per pupil or $84,000 for the for the as far as an increase in that line item. Again, the state doing very well. We're trying to make these estimates a little bit more realistic, and we're predicting a little over $300,000 in state aid. The local receipts are a little potpourri of different kinds of numbers that come in directly into the town, motor vehicle excise taxes, licenses and permits, you know, marriage licenses, tax sale permits, interest on revenues, or other example, fees, building permits, so on and so forth, anticipating that to increase a modest 2% plus for the most part. Some accounts will increase more, anticipating that ambulance, as an example, probably increase about 5%. And currently, we're looking at our our investment income probably increasing a little bit more than that also, where we've already hit what we've earned in FY 23. The first four months, we've already out-earned what we made in FY 22. So the estimated amount for for the investment income might also be going up, but again, conservatively estimated about $141,000. The decrease in the stormwater fund, the stormwater fund is something that's about five or six years old. It's been funded with two sources, the revenue from fees itself, but also had a tax subsidy over the years. What we want, what was, Select Board has a policy to reduce that tax subsidy over the next 15 or so years, and that reduction in the tax subsidy, which will go to the general fund, is an additional $44,000. The revenue estimates that we're using at this point in time, we are currently using zero as far as using any types of reserves to balance this budget. That total sources roughly $2.46 million, which is about 3.24% of the estimated budget for FY 24 of about $76 million. Not it is probably one of the higher increases starting off the fiscal year that we've seen in quite a while. As far as the uses, I don't think there's any surprises on the uses side. Collective bargaining and step increases, we're looking at about a 3% increase. You know, we also have a lot of attrition that come that somewhat keeps that number down a little bit, but that number by itself is $1.2 million. The town has about $44 million worth of wages out of that $76 million alone. So I mean, again, that's where the bulk of our money goes. Once you add in employee benefits, you know, you're talking two-thirds of the budget going towards employee benefits, employee wages and benefits. Expenses, I just threw a number of $100,000. I mean, that is a wild card, given how inflation is going at this point in time. You know, we have about $14 million worth of just general expenses. There's just no way we can keep that number down. I think what the town is going to have to do is prioritize, because if 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 all those, say, level services are put together, it's certainly going to go over the amount that we have available. So there is going to be some given, have to be some give and take on the bottom line of departmental budgets about what they want and how much how much they're asking for. So there is just a small number put there of $100,000, just just to realize that, you know, those expenses are also going up also, but kind of unpredictable. Another big increase that we're going to see is in employee and retiree benefits. The retirement is going to go up about 8%. That's an actuarial study determination that the retired, the Hampton County Regional Retirement System can go up at a maximum of 8%. Long Meadow's actual number will depend on how it compares to the other local communities within the regional retirement system, but we should be somewhere within that 8% range, give or take 1%. Liability insurance, I'm only looking at about a 3% increase. The FY 23 number looks like it was very ample to cover the increase that actually incurred, so I'm not looking at a high number there. Health insurance, the the regional trust, the Scanting Valley Regional Trust seems to be doing well at this point in time. They will be setting their rates within the next couple of months. Historically, I had always put seven and a half percent there, kind of limiting that because of the history that's going on right now within the system, and also because there was a little turnback in FY 22 from that budget, and I would assume there would be a slight amount left over in FY 23. Retiree health insurance is going to be the same kind of explanation. We have a 5% increase. There is an increase that is going forward for retirees in January that's budgeted, and that will be January of '23. It's less than 5%, so that 5% number is probably a conservative number, but again, things can happen over a year. Not a large amount of number when you're talking about a $77 million budget, you know, $77,000 is a drop in the bucket. Medicare, 3%, and the OPEB catch-up. That OPEB catch-up is a little bit a higher number than anticipated, only because in FY 23, there was only about half of the amount that was put in according to the Select Board's policy from operating revenues. The other amount to make up the difference for the Select Board's policy had come out of free cash in FY 23. So in order to make this up and have it completely out of our operating revenues, we need another $307,000. So that's that's something, again, according to the Select Board policy, we're going to need to put into place. Finally, there's just a few others. You know, the debt service, we are hoping to move forward with a new middle school. We have $800,000 bonded at this, well, not bonded yet, but authorized to bond. That's a five-year amortization. If we look at it, it would probably cost us about $200,000 in FY 24 to pay that first year of amortization on that $800,000 authorization. The capital projects increase, 86,4. That takes capital projects at 3% of the Select Board's policy. Select Board policy is roughly 3% of the FY 24 estimated revenues. Total uses, $2.65 million. It is over the sources by about a little bit less than $200,000, which in the scheme of things is near nothing when you're talking about a $77 million budget. You know, it's less than three tenths of 1%. So I almost call this a balanced budget as is, given the fact that, you know, that less than $200,000 would be very easy to find, I believe, in people's budgets. The next slide is a kind of a three-year history on what the general fund sources and uses were. I don't think there's any surprises here. You know, we're seeing property taxes basically, you know, climbing steadily with the, you know, with the the annual two and a half percent increase. You know, the state aid has gone up, you know, fairly dramatically over those couple of years. You know, $500,000 increase from FY 22 to '23, and then again, we're looking at a $200,000 increase from '23 to '24. What you do see is a little decline in the estimated receipts. Some of that decline in estimated receipts in FY 22, because of COVID, there were some FY 21 motor vehicle excise tax commitments that were pushed off, and some of those were collected in FY 22. That kind of exaggerates that FY 22 number somewhat. Also, we're trying to be a little bit conservative in FY 23 and FY 24 on the ambulance revenues, only because they had bad years with COVID. We need to build up that fund in order to put them back on track with their funding requirements for if they need a new ambulance in four or five years, that we will have those funds available. The free cash that was expended in FY 22, if people go back, look at the annual town meeting, they're going to see that it was expended on legal expenses, snow and ice removal. There was a grant match, compensation study, money for the Long Meadow Street design, a pool, lighter bills of prior year. Operationally, again, there's just some steady increases there, as long as the steady increases in the capital. Moving forward, I just want to also project one other thing. We're talking or have talked over the years about the so-called fiscal cliff. Basically, you can only see two lines here, because two lines are kind of right on each other. The actual tax levy and the actual tax levy limit are near actual. The difference between the two lines are what is known as our excess capacity. If the bottom line were raised up to the top line, we would be at a $25 tax rate. In FY 23, in my discussions with the Department of Revenue, they are telling me that valuations are going up anywhere from 12 to 20% in values. So I'm anticipating I put a 10% a 10% valuation increase for FY 23. The FY 23 number is based on the the sales revenue from calendar year 2021, and as people know, we're still doing fairly well, even though the interest rates, our mortgages have gone up. We're still doing fairly well as far as prices, and with a 5% increase in estimated for FY 24, you can see how that how that gap kind of grows there. It grows from, you know, we had a small, I don't say a small difference, but the difference between the tax levy ceiling and the tax levy limit in fiscal year 2022 was roughly $6.3 million. In FY 24, given these assumptions, it will go up to nearly, it almost doubles to $12.3 million. So when we talk about that cliff, I think we have, we can breathe a little bit easier over the next couple of years. You know, I can't say that in FY 25, it won't crash on us. It could very well, but you know, given the immediate outlook, we do, it does look pretty good. As far as the tax rate is concerned, given that 10% increase and making an assumption, the FY 23 tax rate is $24.64. If we did have about a 10% increase in valuation, the tax rate would drop to 23.46. So it will be a decrease in the tax rate. Again, people will see it potentially a 10% higher valuation, and they will also see an increase in the bottom line tax bill. Don't want to mislead anybody. So other than that, again, I mean, to me, it's probably the easiest year that I've ever put forward, working for the town and doing these presentations to the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee. Usually, it's at least a half a million dollars in the hole. And for, you know, over over the years, for whatever reason, we've always made it work. You know, we've had to make cuts. We've had to be conservative on some some things, but we've always made it work over the years. And I would anticipate in FY 24, we're going to make it work. It just might be a little bit, I'm hoping it's going to be a little bit easier. I'll turn it over to questions.
Thank you, Paul. My question is, you know, I like the projection of property values going up in our tax rate, tax rate going down, even though the taxes will go up. But what's the, you know, what's the sensitivity? In other words, you know, if there's a recession that comes along, property, we've seen property values decline too.
Absolutely.
What's the, you know, what's the gap? You say it can go up 10% in value, but how much can we afford to have property values decrease before we are find ourselves unable to meet our obligations?
Well, if you were to look at FY 24 on that, if you have that slide open, we would we would have to see a drop from 68 million down to 56 million. So we would have to see about a 20% drop in the in the valuation before we come back to a $25 tax rate or hit the ceiling, or however you want to describe that.
Thank you.
Paul, have we ever seen a drop like that since you've been working in?
20%? No, I have not seen. We had drops, considerable drops in around 2008, you know, most times, and I don't even remember how much they were. In the recent years, it's been single digits, you know, 1.4% and things to that nature. Back in 2008, 2009, I don't know if I have it. I don't remember what the numbers were, but they might have been in the five or the or the 6% range. So I don't, you know, while it's possible to go down 20%, I would have to say that it's unlikely that it's going to do that in one year. Probably be a period of three or four years by the time we ever saw that.
Well, of all years I've been on the board, this is the most optimistic view of how the budget's going and and the ability to avoid reaching $25 per sound, because 22.46, I mean, that is the best news you've given me, Paul, I think, ever.
Well, it's 23.46. So isn't that good?
Oh, 23?
Yeah. Oh, it was 23.46 of this year's, if it was this year, he said, this year's tax rate would have been 23.46. It's going to be different next year.
Right. Well, for FY 24, it'll be even different. Yeah, I was referring to the 22 versus 23 tax rates.
So, so Paul, when, you know, when are we doing our our tax value? And will we have those new property values for the fiscal 2023 or not?
We are doing those as we speak. I know that, again, we do not have a principal assessor, but we do have a consultant in there working on those state forms right now. I would assume, and we do have, we are having a scheduled tax hearing on the 5th of December, so I would assume by almost next week, we would have that number, the late next week, we would have that number solidified.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if you have access to this information, but, you know, people like love to bring up the Long Meadow's highest mill rate in the state. Would, are we thinking we're going to drop down, or is this something that's happening all over the state with the values going up?
This is something that's happening all over the state. Yeah, I don't know if we'll if we'll maintain the crown or not, but it will certainly be in the top three.
And you said that you're basing the assumptions this year on a 10% valuation, but you said a number number that you got from the state, an increase of 12 to 20, did you say? I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
Right. I put in 10% just for illustration purposes.
Right.
The number I've heard from the state, 12 to 20% is not, it's very common.
Wow.
And again, you have to remember that that 12 to 20% is based on FY 21 sales.
It's always the eastern part of the state, too. Western Mass lags. We're always at the lower end of it.
Price, prices around here are about up that much, too. Yeah, it's just a lower number because we start lower. Yeah.
So I mean, I do, I mean, we do have a budget calendar. I don't know if you can bring that up, Mike, just to get everybody on the same page as far as expectations with the calendar.
When, Lynn, when you mentioned, when we discussed this at a prior Select Board meeting, you talked about the wage and classification study that may impact this.
Yes.
Obviously, we don't talk about wages that we haven't negotiated yet or haven't impacted, haven't dealt with yet, but I assume that that will, I mean, will impact this to some some extent, right?
Yes, yeah, it would.
The thing I would offer there, too, Mark, though, is there was, you know, there was an amount of money set aside in June of '21, June of '22, June of '22, June of '22, that, you know, that, a lot of that, you know, most of that money still exists in order to do that. So that money is set aside for the short term. When we get into FY 24, maybe '25, is when we still have to fund it. But for the short term, we probably have enough that it won't have a major impact. You know, we're looking at right now, we're, you know, we're talking December 5th is Select Board meeting, classification hearing. November 21st is where we're at, is basically the joint meeting. Basically, we have, if you can scroll up, the department heads have their budgets due until then, at the end of January. You know, we'll go through between January, the beginning of January, January 20th, a couple cycles with the department heads, the non-school. The school department budget looks like it is due on the, the actual final one is due on February 17th. You know, we'd love to have some numbers before that, just so we know where we're at. And then going down one more, the town manager must have her budget into the Select Board by, I believe it's March 6th. March 6th, the Select Board then has about two weeks in which they need to finalize the budget. It is their budget that actually goes to the town meeting, finalize the warrant, give it off to the Finance Committee for their recommendations, and then at the end of the March, it kind of goes off to the printer. And they kind of, I don't say we're at a standstill, but you know, the printer has to do his thing. It's delivered off to the residents towards the end of April, and then the town meeting is May 9th. So, I mean, everything really works backwards from from May 9th. It's all dictated by charter and bylaws. But again, for the School Committee purposes, February 17th. For the non-school department heads, January 20th is final numbers are kind of due.
Paul, just for, to reiterate, you put in the wage increases and salary increases that have been negotiated in union contracts, I presume, and for everything else, you just for, you put in a, that sounds like a flat $100,000 increase in expenses?
Yeah, for 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 non-wages, it's just $100,000 I would put in there. Now, again, that's where that number is going to, realistically, is going to be much greater than that, and that's where people are really going to have to to make some prioritized decisions.
But as we're here to communicate with the School Committee, what are we saying to them in terms of, you know, all the line items other than than wages and salaries? What are we saying to them about the bottom line? That that's in your assumptions?
Well, I mean, I guess we could, if we had, as you looked at the numbers, if you saw $100,000 and we're still 200 short, I mean, I think you have to keep it pretty well, almost level funded, your 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 non-salary budgets. I mean, we know that's going to be near impossible. I think historically, what we've done, Mark, is is we waited to see what they've had. We waited to see what the town sites had, and then we've always come back and worked with the administration in order to to come back with a compromise on, you know, where we've been. It's kind of hard to tell them an exact number. Just, I mean, as much as these are the best numbers that I presented, you know, again, I don't think anybody can go crazy with their bottom line. There has to be some some fiscal constraint. And again, remember that, you know, we understand inflation as much as you do, but it's just something that proposition two and a half doesn't take into consideration.
Paul, in terms of the local receipts, so obviously, we're looking at a few years here, but if we were to take a step back, are these numbers pretty much around 5.5 million consistently, or?
Five point, yeah, and they grow steadily from year to year. I mean, the numbers presented here are somewhat conservative for, you know, a few reasons, as I said before. But they do grow grow steadily by, you know, $100, $150,000. You know, in FY 23, I can tell you already that our ending amount of of interest revenue is going to far exceed, you know, what's in the projection already. So that will only carry forward into FY 24. However, if interest rates start However, if interest rates start to recede backwards, you know, I'm going to have to recede backwards on what I can predict for FY twenty-four also, so.
And the reason why I'm asking is because we're going to be taking up and looking at some of the fees and just looking at some of the dates in which we actually made some of these changes, and it seems like it's been a decade.
Yeah.
So as we talk about, you know, some of the numbers with the school, I'm just thinking, I feel like this is a line item that we could really focus on increasing.
It would be a good place for everybody to take a look at, to see what is reasonable. You know, there are many fees that are set by statute and can be adjusted. But, you know, technically, those fees are supposed to cover the cost of issuing, you know, I'll say, you know, of a building permit. How much time does it take the building department to go out, do an inspection, write up any type of report, all that kind of stuff? It should equate somewhere around that same number. So as, over the years, if it's been that long, we know that those wages have gone up. And realistically, it might be time for some of those to go up again.
On the long and same lines, I looked at our fee schedule and what we're looking at tonight. Do you have an idea of your estimated local receipts, how much of that is statutory versus what we have a change on?
I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't. I mean, I can tell you which, I can tell you how much we received in every category. If you wanted to check them off, this whole is statutory, this one wasn't. But I don't have a number from how you're asking the question.
Yeah, looking at local receipts, there's a couple that have a fairly large number, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we get a good amount of, you know, building permits are three hundred thousand dollars for the year. You know, motor vehicle excises by far our biggest local receipt, you know, two point three plus million dollars. You know, I, you know, prices of cars are going up, but I don't know how the sales have been. You know, you were hearing at one point in time, sales for cars were fantastic. You know, because the interest rates were low, you just don't hear that anymore. You just hear that, you know, you can't buy a car for the sticker price anymore, that's for sure.
Well, I, um, to the question that Tom raised earlier, I was able to locate one of the documents that you gave us addressing the valuation decreases. And I guess the question was, how bad could it get or how bad's it going to pass? And I'm looking at one, this is two thousand and ten. We had a decrease of three point eight percent according to your document. And two thousand and thirteen, three point eighteen percent. Two thousand and fourteen, four point thirteen percent. Those are negative numbers. But nothing approaching the twenty percent decrease or even ten percent. As you said, it was, you were talking single digits, yeah. I don't know if you have that document. I think I can probably tell you when you sent it to us, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I have other documents with all the assessed values on them. As I have here, you know, it goes back to nineteen eighty-five. I just don't have the percentages attached to them. But, you know, I can see those same years where it has gone down.
Right, those numbers that I just get, those are the, the document you gave us went back to, it had those values going back to two thousand and seven.
Right.
From two thousand and twenty. And that, those were, those are the three largest decreases that we had. So, so nothing approaching a twenty percent loss in valuation.
Even year over year, like accumulative, it's not even coming posted.
Because then you get increases in between the decreases. So I guess that's good news.
I'd also, I think that Long Meadow is in a good position for properties to increase in value because, you know, between our schools and our DPW, our town offices, our services we offer people in town, the fact that people are now able to work home more often than have to go to work is just a nice place to be and look out your window and, you know, go outside, take a walk, come back and do some work. So I think as we see the economic picture changing to more people working mobily, I think that's really going to help us, you know, in terms of people wanting to live in town. And I think we're, I think we like to think we're over the hump.
Yeah, and wanting to do, make those kinds of valuation increasing improvements to their homes. Some folks add in rooms, add in beautiful patios and decks and sunrooms and remodeling kitchens because they're going to be home.
I'm guilty.
We probably all are.
Yeah, I think that's the doc, that's the one.
Yeah, I mean, I had that same report, Marty.
Was this last year?
And I'm looking, I mean, there's a period of between two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen or fifteen that cumulatively, the values went down twelve, I would say about twelve percent. So even though they're small amounts, they do add up over time. Because the increases were point eight four, point oh two, point three one, point three nine, where the decreases were three point eight eight, three point one eight, four point one three, so.
We got an increase in there, Paul, six point three two in two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, that's the very next year, and then minus twenty-four, then up four point six eight. It kind of, kind of goes all over the table.
Yeah. So this increase this year is remarkable.
This increase, yeah, as you can see from that, you know, there's nothing ever, there's, there's nothing that's ever been in double digits before.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
And if we're talking approaching twenty percent, that's.
You know, it's almost twice as much. I mean, that, that, that's six percent, and there's not even another one that's even five percent.
I know.
Well, as far as I know, no one's ever gone bust betting that home values never go down. So I'm glad we're being conservative, despite that. Any other questions from our board? Anybody else?
Well, I can speak to some things that we're sort of mulling over heading into the next fiscal year. It's nice, first off, to have the opportunity to get to sit down with everybody tonight and plan for the coming year. And thank you for going through all the numbers for us, and appreciate getting that info. We have a few issues at the front of our planning when we look forward to the next fiscal year. The first of these is related to meeting the needs of our out-of-district students with special needs. The operational services division submitted an estimate for a fourteen percent tuition rate increase for private out-of-district placements for private special education schools. This is a very significant increase over their usual increase over the last thirteen years. It's run between one and a half to two point two five percent. So this is a significant hike for us. For the town of Long Meadow, that would be an increase of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our school budget, if that is approved by the legislature.
You say an increase?
Three hundred and ninety thousand dollars additional for that piece of our budget. So that's something that we are concerned with and making sure that we're providing those services for our students and that they're getting all the educational needs they have, while also making sure that we have the funding to continue services here in district. Another piece of the puzzle that is at the front of our planning, and I know has been for the last few years, is related to pandemic. So our students continue to experience post-pandemic needs, and those are a big piece of our fiscal planning as well. In particular, academic and social emotional needs are increased coming out of these pandemic years. And so we've been working to increase and allocate funds for resources and staffing to support those needs and make sure that we're able to continue providing access to the best learning opportunities for our students as they move forward from that pandemic time. So those are kind of two of our fiscal pictures that we're looking at as we move forward into the next step.
Can you explain how the out-of, the private school placement works? Is that students, they can't get the services they require in Long Meadow?
Correct. Those are for students where they cannot receive the services that best suit their needs in district. So they receive out-of-district placements.
What's creating the huge jump? Is it a tuition increase, or is it just more students?
No, it's, it's the tuition rate increase. The OSD has announced that their expected tuition rate increase would be fourteen percent for fiscal year twenty-four.
Would that trigger additional reimbursement from the state?
If it does, then it would not apply until fiscal year twenty-five. Correct. So. I know there's been reaching out to senators and representatives. I wrote a letter, I know several other surrounding districts have written letters. And across the state, districts are writing letters requesting help with funding. So that's a possibility, but we have not received any word on that. And typically, that gap funding would be for fiscal year twenty-five.
It's really an inflationary thing. The private schools, private special education schools are facing some significant staffing shortages and inflationary pressure. And so we're hoping that number doesn't stand the test of the legislative process. We're hoping that perhaps there's a phase in on that increase over a period of years. That would provide us some relief. But the circuit breaker funding that chases these costs usually follows in the subsequent fiscal year, so. So it's something we're, something we're tracking. But we've been in touch with our legislative delegation to talk to them about what that would mean for our budget here in Long Meadow.
What are, I don't know who's, who has the answer. What are the projected enrollments for our school system next year versus the last couple of years? And also, when I hear a lot about it, is in per capita spending for the, for students trending over the last couple of years? Do you have a summary of that?
I don't have the enrollment numbers with me, Mark. It's something we could get for you. But I'm not anticipating that it's going to be a significant increase or decrease for next year. And then the, you know, per people spending, that was something that came on our budget discussions last year to ensure that we incorporate that into our budget presentation for you. So you better understand what that looks like historically and going forward. We were fortunate that, that the state responded last year with a significant increase in chapter seventy-eight. You recall, that was about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to help us, to help the town out in FY twenty-three. So that, that's sort of baked into the chapter seventy funding formula right now. So that's, that's, you know, we can build on that increase going forward. No, I haven't, I don't think we have any sense of what chapter seventy-eight will look like for FY twenty-four. But we're hoping that, you know, the state will continue to implement the funding formula changes that they came up with a few years ago.
Thank you. So just in terms of the out-of-district placements, these are basically approved, you know, accredited private schools. And do they get any state funding that could affect that fourteen percent increase if they got more money from the state? Or is it just their private and that's what we're going to get?
It's, their budgets are built on the tuitions that they receive from public school districts.
Right, so it's just what they get from, so if they, they just raise the price for us, but they're not going to get money. They don't, there's no other sort of money from the state that could reach these programs. It's just your money.
Not to my knowledge.
Our money that you share, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a tuition-driven formula.
Yeah, I know it's changed a lot since I was in special ed because we, we didn't make any money those days.
A question about that, are, with respect to the needs of the students that are being sent out of district because in district, their needs can't be met. Are we locked into particular institutions depending on what the needs of the particular student are? So if you think of need A, need B, need C, must the kids who have need A go to school X? And the kids who have need B must go to school Y, and the kids who have need C go to, or do, does the law metal have some choice or say in which one of the institutions they?
You really, you really have to meet the student's needs. So finding, you know, the free and appropriate public education for a kid in a least restrictive environment. So wherever that setting happens to be is where we're obligated to place the child. We've, we've been very successful in recent years in developing programs in district to, you know, allow kids to be educated in their hometown, in their home neighborhood. And that's been, that's been great for kids, and it's also fiscally responsible to do that. But ultimately, it's, it's really dependent on the needs of the child. You have to find a placement that matches the student's needs.
But I, so I guess my question is, goes to the finding. The finding happens on our end, meaning the Long Meadow educators end are the ones who do the finding? Or is it the principal, or is it yourself?
They're team decisions. By law, it's a decision that's made by the child's special education team.
Okay. In the school?
In the school.
Superintendent, the team includes the parents, though.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Anything else in the plans? Well, thank you for coming.
All right, we will adjourn then. Entertain a motion. All right, we need to do a roll call vote on that. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. We appreciate meeting with you tonight.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Finance committee, I need a motion to a.
We can't, we can't move, we can't.
We don't? Erica doesn't, or does she just go out?
I think she might have.
Well, that, we need four in there.
Ah, you're right, okay, we're good.
Oh, we do have, we did that for.
You guys are still on?
Oh, hi, sorry.
If Erica's still on.
You could still do with you three. I think she hopped up.
Okay, so, motion to adjourn, I think.
Good luck.
Roll call, no one?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
She would have said yes if she was still with us.
She says yes, he's here.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. And thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, on our agenda, moving on to our announcements. Finance committee, speaking of, notice of vacancy. The town of Long Meadow is seeking interested residents to fill one vacancy on the town's finance committee as a replacement for a position that was vacated. The vacancy is for less than one year, with the term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Interested, interested persons must fill out an application available in the select board office or online at www-longmeadowma.gov/committee-application. Applications must be submitted by noon on Friday, December second, two thousand and twenty-two. Additional information regarding the finance committee's role can be found at longmeadowma.gov/financem Committee. Questions should be submitted to Paul Pesterzak at his email address or at four one three five six five four one three six. Tax classification public hearing. The Long Meadow Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty PM to hear public input and then vote on the proper tax classification of all property in the town of Long Meadow. The hearing will be held at Long Meadow Public School Central Office, meeting room A fifteen, five thirty-five Bliss Road, Long Meadow, Mass, and by Zoom webinar. Zoom information can be found on the select board agenda for the meeting on December fifth. Comments and/or concerns can also be emailed to the Long Meadow Select Board Office at selectboard@longmeadow.org. Town offices holiday schedule. Reminder, town offices will close at noon on Wednesday, November twenty-third, and reopen on Monday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Next up, we have resident comments. You approach, Gary?
Gary Levine, two oh seven Williams Street. Good evening. First of all, I wish to thank the select board for your support in our efforts to oppose the EverSource Western Mass reliability project. The Energy Facility Siting Board has scheduled a date for a virtual public hearing on the EverSource Long Meadow Springfield Pipeline Project for Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM. In addition, it has set a due date of January second, two thousand and twenty- In addition, it has set a due date of January 2nd, 2023, for the submission of written comments. Scheduling a public hearing on this project during the holiday season is unacceptable. Scheduling a single virtual Zoom public hearing is unacceptable. Firstly, there should be a site visit before a public hearing. And secondly, there should not be a public hearing before the EIR report is completed by MIPR, so that the environmental impacts of the project are known to the public. Third, having a single, almost superfluous, at this point, virtual hearing is unfair to the citizens of both Long Meadow and Springfield. There should be two in-person hearings, one for Long Meadow and one for Springfield, to allow all of us to fully present our views on this project. In addition, having a due date for written comments on a federal holiday is unacceptable and inappropriate. The date for written submissions must be moved to a better time for all citizens. I'm asking the Select Board to join us in this effort and to request that the EFSB change the date or dates and form of the public hearing and for the submission of written comments. This will ensure a fair and equitable comment period for the citizens of Long Meadow and of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Mike, do we have anyone online?
Just a reminder, if you're here to make a resident comment through Zoom, please press the raised hand icon. I don't see anyone.
Okay, great. We'll move on to DEI Committee interviews. And I presume that Jim is not here.
Yeah, Jim actually reached out late this afternoon that he was gonna be unable to attend. But I believe Beverly, are you Beverly?
Beverly, come on up, please. Beverly, did you happen to watch our meeting last week or two weeks ago?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you know what we're gonna ask.
I know, yes.
Why don't you tell us what interests you about the DEI Committee and what brings you to us tonight?
Well, what brings me to you is that I am a, an advocate for people. I've been a social worker in my career. I've actually, I think, been a social worker my whole life, even without training, because I've always tried to advocate for people to get along, to have resources, to have equity and inclusion, actually, throughout my whole life. So when I heard about the DEI Committee, that it was forming here in Long Meadow, I was excited to make an application and hope that I might be able to be selected. I assume you'd like to know a little bit about my history or, you know?
Please.
Yeah. Well, when I, oh, first of all, I didn't say my name, which is Beverly Zager. I live at 60 Chester Drive in Long Meadow. I've been a resident for about seven years. I relocated here after I retired. I was a school social worker in Stratford, Connecticut. And when I retired, my family, my daughter and her family live here. And I have three grandchildren that are in the Long Meadow Public Schools here in Long Meadow. So, you know, as I said, as a child, I was always, you know, the person that was trying to help people get along. I've always been interested and curious about why people are different and how, you know, what they believe and how, what they're like. When I was in high school, I was active in my church youth group. We visited mental health institutions and nursing homes and Southbury Training School. And, you know, we interacted with the residents. And again, I always felt like, you know, gee, that could be me. Or, you know, I wondered why people had certain lots in life and why I had my lot in life that seemed to be, you know, pretty privileged, actually. I went to college and studied, started studying chemistry because I was very good in science, especially chemistry. But after a year, I realized that that's not what I wanted to do with my life. I wanted to work with people. I wanted to understand people. So I switched my major to world religions and, you know, studied different cultures and different beliefs and ended up with that degree. Right after college, I took a job in Albuquerque, New Mexico, working as a teacher in a very small, it was a Methodist mission school in the middle of Albuquerque. And there were 42 girls, grades seven through 12, and they were there for different reasons. Some were homeless, they were wards of the state, and they needed a place to live. It was a residential facility. It was an old converted school building, actually, into a dorm and then classes and cafeteria. And I taught religion and math. Not knowing that I was gonna teach math, I went down to teach religion and found out they didn't have a math teacher, so I taught math as well. But I got very involved with these 42 girls. And some were very handicapped physically, some were emotionally or mentally handicapped. We had, we had students that were from the Hopi Reservation because there were no schools that they could go to. And we had Mexican-American girls and all different, all different races and all kinds of status. So we, it was at that point that I really knew that I wanted to work with teenagers. And I knew that I wanted to do, somehow, I wanted to work with these kids to make their lives better. So I came back to Connecticut, went, and then I, eventually, I went to social work school in New York City and got my Masters of Social Work and got a job in Stratford, Connecticut, which was very diverse because it was right next to Bridgeport, which is one of the two poorest cities in Connecticut, and Fairfield, Connecticut, and Westport, which are right next to some of the wealthiest. So our, our population was very diverse racially and economically. I got very involved with diversity and helping people, you know, get along and know each other who probably wouldn't have had any other reason to see each other except that they were in the same classes. So I ran diversity groups for parents and students and staff with an African-American man who was a Stratford therapist. I ran some, we ran some multicultural groups for students. We ran some after-school programs. And then I also was involved in some of the inclusion policies of the school system and arranging for support groups for the parents. So in, here in Long Meadow, you know, I've just always been wanting to be very active. And I'm in the Long Meadow Anti-Racism Coalition. You might have seen me at Standouts. I'm doing some of those in the summers. I'm very active in the Social Justice Committee at my church, First Church. And we actually got an award from the Martin Luther King Family Services in Springfield because of our work in education around racism. And we had done a couple of book studies. And we're presently doing some programs on anti-Semitism. And they're open to the community and open, you know, to members.
Are you familiar with some of the other folks who have applied so far?
I am, I know some of them, yes. Do you want me to know?
Oh, no, just curious. I assume you know some of them.
Yeah, sure. I know some. And I think that's probably what I need to say. I don't, yeah. The other thing is I, I am a team player. I really enjoy collaborating with people. And I would very much like to serve on this team. So that's it.
Any questions from the board?
Any questions, yeah.
I'd just like to say it's, it's nice to see a group worker step forward to help with a program like this.
Oh, great.
Thanks for your volunteer.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, I'd like to do that. So that is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Zager. I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Once we reach a critical mass of applicants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. So we don't really know when that will be.
What is the number right now? Do we know?
We've interviewed now seven. We have one person pending who was supposed to make, was on the slate for tonight. So I think we have 11 applicants for nine positions right now. We still have to interview three.
Okay.
I'll be voting soon then.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right. Next up, we have the public hearing, so we'll wait on that and go on to Select Board comments. I just want to congratulate the field hockey team on their championship. Coach Simons, very storybook ending for, in her last season. And I was hoping we could get, like we did with the lacrosse team, have them come in for a certificate. And I think that'd be great for us to do and really excited for the, for our girls. Fantastic job. Any other comments? Mark?
I just wanted to bring the board up to date on a couple of things. I attended a couple of board meetings this past month. I was at the PVTA Advisory Committee meeting and I, you know, the PVTA is doing what the PVTA does. But I think the important thing for people, especially people at home, to understand is that because of a special state grant, buses are going to be free for a six-week period of around now through the end of, through the first of the year. There's only one longstanding bus route in Long Meadow, the G5 route that goes down Dickinson Street, comes down Converse Street, down to, essentially down to Long Meadow Street and turns around down, I think, at Bay Path University. But people should feel free to take advantage of it. It does get you downtown. The price is right. And I think if we take advantage of these, we'll be able to demonstrate additional public transportation for the, for the town of Long Meadow. So I think it's a great opportunity. So I wanted to make sure people were that, wear that. I was at the Hampden County Regional Retirement Board Audit Committee meeting and because of a technicality that the Hampden County Board threw at the Audit Committee, they were not able to be held. They were concerned that their, their presentation by the outside auditors was not something that was expected. And I'm not sure how this came about, but the, essentially, the meeting was canceled and they were going to try to reschedule for this coming week. But I think it demonstrates some of the issues that the Hampden County Retirement Board is having with outside oversight, which, you know, you would think that they'd want the Audit Committee to review comments from the outside auditors, but it didn't appear to want to happen. The last thing I just wanted to comment on, and I know that our town manager's been working on it, Josh, I think you've been working on, we've been talking about asking a representative from Waste Management to come to speak to our Select Board. Once again today, they didn't finish their, their pickup in town. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue. And I think we need to understand what, what those issues are and that, that they have a handle on, on the issues. And I think people need to understand that it concerns the Select Board as much as it concerns everybody else.
Just on that last point, I know you hear about the trash a lot, Mark. And it doesn't always make it to the rest of the board. So if people do have an issue and they want us to know, and this goes for anything, send it to selectboard@longmeadow.org. If it goes to individual members, it may or may not make it on the, to the rest of the board and the agenda.
I just question, Mark, the, the buses are gonna be free for the month of December?
I think it's, it's a six-week period. Actually, it's, it's half of November and all of December, Tom.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. And it's not, there's some question, I have to tell you, about outside Hampden County because the grant came through the city of Springfield. I believe they're extending it to all buses. But, you know, the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority runs the UMass and five college transit system. And that's already, I mean, you show your ID and you run it because the colleges do a subsidy. So even though this free may not apply there, they don't pay anyway. I mean, those students, for the most part, aren't paying. So the answer is yes, it's, it's free.
Yeah. I'll have to go to their website to make sure where the route is. Because I think I see it going all the way to infield line, but that, it changes.
It did go to the infield line. I thought they changed it, but they may not, may not, Tom. I'm not sure. I thought they were gonna turn around at Bay Path, but whatever. You're right. People should go to their website, pvta.org.
Do you want to get a pass to get on or you just?
Nope, you just walk on. You don't need anything. Nope.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing that.
I just, real quick, so on Saturday, I did a site visit with the Tree Committee with Dave Marinelli, some other folks on the committee. And David Marinelli, actually, I'm just reading it right now, he had measured a couple trees and he thinks we might be in the running for the largest American beech tree right here in Long Meadow. So pretty exciting stuff. Just wanted to share that.
I think that one dropped all its leaves on my yard. Interesting. Okay, moving right on to town managers' report.
Thank you. So we had another auction of surplus items. It concluded last week. There were about 34 items that were sold, ranging from more plow blades, a crane, computer carts, and a bike. Proceeds from the auction totaled $82,321.26. And I just want to call attention to virtual access to Town Hall. This is something we had launched during the pandemic, but now with the new website, it's even easier to transact business with town offices virtually. So this essentially provides access to Town Hall 24/7. Online transactions range from paying water and sewer and stormwater bills, property taxes, filing a zoning complaint, renewing a dog license, and requesting vital records, to reporting a streetlight outage and filing a building permit. We're gonna continue to try to expand those online offerings as we have capacity to do so. And I'm pleased to announce, we had a promotion of Police Sergeant last week. With the retirement of Sergeant Woznawskis in September, we had a vacancy that was created. In early November, a test was held and interviews took place last week. I'm pleased to announce that the promotion of Officer Amanda Van Buskirk to the rank of Sergeant, it's going to be effective November 27th. Sergeant Van Buskirk is most known in the community as the K-9 officer. And Sergeant Van Buskirk has been with the department for 12 years. So congratulations to Sergeant Van Buskirk. And lastly, it's not included here in my report, but I did want to take the opportunity to let you know that I, last week, I attended the Mass Manager's Fall Conference at UMass Amherst. It gives me an opportunity to talk with my colleagues from across the state. And one thing that became very clear to me after some of those conversations was how fortunate I am to have such a great working relationship with the Select Board. And I just wanted to make sure that you all are, you are aware that you all work very hard. And I think that the relationship that we have and the just overall working of the board is, it goes really well. And I don't know that the public maybe sees that as much, but certainly talking with colleagues in other parts of the state, we're very lucky with what we have here now. So I thank you all for that. And while we might not always agree, we generally, you do it still in a respectful way.
Yeah, just, just a response. We haven't had in-person MMA meetings for a couple of years, but, so I don't know, I know Tom's gone to them, but if you go to those, you get the true sense of some of the issues that do come up. So I appreciate your comments. You hear a lot of grumblings, is I guess what.
Be very grateful.
That's what I was gonna say. Lynn, I, I had just a couple of questions, but primarily, it's, it's about the monthly reports. I'm still concerned about the DPW. In the past, we get capital reports, engineering projects, rounds. Is that in the works?
It is in the works, yes. They have been under deadline. And it was a situation of priorities. They needed to get the capital plan into me. It was due a couple of weeks ago, so that took precedent over the monthly report this month. So, but they do know that this is a priority and they're trying to get back on track with that. They were also working on reformatting, how it was done. They're, they think there's a better way.
Good, yeah, there definitely was. The other thing I just commented on that I think people started getting, I know I did getting water bills in the, in the mail this, this week or today. And I just wanted to comment on Lisa Lockson, who put in a lot of effort, not only implementing the water billing system, which apparently is one of the easier parts of what she had to do, but we had to switch printers, is my understanding. Because the old printer no longer does it. And there's a whole formatting thing, which is one of the reasons I think it's a week or so behind where we would have liked it to have been. But I think we ought to acknowledge the work Lisa did because it was what I could gather a ton of work to get that, get those out and get them outright. get those out and get them outright.
Anybody else? Okay, and anything, speaking of monthly reports, any, anybody have comments on those? As always, thank you. Tell the department heads to send those in. The approval of meeting minutes for November 7, 2022.
How move we approve the minutes of November 7, 2022?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Continuing on our old business, Select Board Town Manager 2023 updated goals.
So this is, um, this is on here, just so we don't lose sight of it. We did talk about bringing this back when the agenda got a little bit lighter and we could kind of dive into it more. But I also don't want, you know, six months to go by without making sure that we're looking at this. So a lot of this stuff is still happening behind the scenes, but I think as some things close up, we could look at maybe adding a few more in. And we can talk about this in greater detail now, or we can, I can gather some goals from you and we can add them to the list and then discuss those at a future meeting. Looking for some guidance here.
I just had one question. I don't, through the bottom, it talks about the charter review recommendations. And so that's what we had talked about a while ago. You know, when I was in the chair, you know, the school board looked it over and said, you know, we don't need to make any changes. Are there any outstanding?
It's actually right below it.
It's, is that on my, was it another page?
Josh, can I just respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so Tom, the answer is yes. There were seven items in the end. I get, I had gathered those seven items and actually, I took the recommendation, the seven recommendations from the committee. And I, you know, and I looked at them and thought, what would the Select Board might say? They were my words. And then I sent those to Dave Martell, who's the, who's the chair of it.
Right.
And for a variety of reasons.
The lifetime chair, I guess. The lifetime chair.
The lifetime, yeah, he's right.
This is going on and on.
So, and Dave Martell, due to some, you know, unforeseeable things, took a while, but he did get back to me a week ago with his comments. And so I've actually sent the original recommendations, my comments, and Dave Martell's responses to Josh.
Okay.
And I think I sent it to Lynn too. And so there, those items out, are out there. I can summarize them as being, for the most part, capital planning, the Audit Committee, which we kind of punted on, thanks to some comments by people on the Audit Committee, and also the budget movement process. That's essentially where those seven items fell. And so I think the, you know, the suggestion was, we take that document, and Mike has it now, send it to you and Dan, and, and now Josh already has it, and let you look at it, make your comments, and then we can come back here and decide, do we want to do anything on it or not? I will make a, just a quick comment that said, that, that, for example, the comment about the, needing a supermajority to terminate the contract of a school superintendent or a town manager. You know, the comments by Dave Martell was, it's a decision for the town meeting to make and not the school committee or the Select Board. And he believes something like that should go to the, the town meeting and not have the school committee unilaterally say, we don't want to act on it. Now, that was not how we chose to, to, to deal with it at the time, but that was his comment, for example. And there were other comments like that. So I think it may be worthwhile, and I think maybe in the coming week, Mike, you can circulate that document to, to Tom and Dan, and they can see, I don't know, Josh, because I think that's what you said.
Yeah.
That the comments were worthwhile.
Yeah, Mike can pull them together and then we can all review it together.
But again, and, and so the document says, here are the seven, you know, section, section 2-13, 2-17, whatever it is. It says each one, here's the recommendation, here's what, where, where we are with those, okay?
Now, with the Audit Committee, I thought that we had already voted on that, because there was talk about maybe we didn't need an Audit Committee and we voted, yes, we do need an Audit Committee.
You know, I, I'd rather, I, I, I don't recall exactly where we were, but it was all covered in there. And I remember that one of the members of the Audit Committee was, you know, who said, you know, I, I don't agree with what's going on, but, but let, I'd like, like to let Dave Martell and the committee's comments speak for themselves and then we can go bring them all up one by one. I think that's the right way to do it.
Well, as long as, I, I guess I would just ask that, once that list is together, that we review the records one more time.
Yeah.
And make sure.
Yeah, we don't have to take any action.
Mike or Lynn would have to, just to make sure we haven't voted on these, because I, I find it hard to believe there's seven that we missed. That's, that's a lot, you know, considering it was something that, you know, Marie worked on, I worked on, you worked on, you know.
And, and a couple of them, we, you know, we, I know we, we voted to do something. And Martell was saying, he doesn't, go back and look again. That's, it was his request. That's, and we don't, you know, we can go back and say, we looked and we're still not going to do anything about it. I mean, you know, we, we still run this, it was a committee and not a, a commission. And they made their recommendations and we can act on them or not. So that's what I think we ought to do.
But if we've taken a vote on something, we have to rescind the vote in order to vote on it again.
Probably should look at those. I, I, like I said, when I went through it, Tom, I didn't recall ever having done a couple of these, with the exception of that school, school superintendent issue that I know we'd worked on.
Also, if I may, in November of 2021, we brought a few of these to town meeting. I believe it was like the procedures, Town Manager, or something like that. So a few of them were on the last fall town meeting agenda, uh, town meeting warrant, not this past meeting, but last year. There were a few that were on that one that were voted on by town meeting. There was a few finance committee or finance charter reviews that were not implemented into that warrant. And then I, capital planning, like you said.
So for this generally, I, I think that, I, I don't know if it's a good use of our time, at least tonight. We should do it every once in a while, but go through the whole thing. I think it, it was intended as a living document. I think that's how it should be kept. The only thing I, I was thinking is, if we could put on like a projection for a date or like a, a date for goals, because otherwise it seems hard to tell where, if something is, and I know they have, they have to be projections, but it does, it seems hard to tell when something, if it's behind or if it's in progress, but it's on, it's going to where, where it needs to be. And maybe some way of sorting it by priority. If there's something that is more important, if we can keep them more at the top. But I don't want things dropping down to the bottom and getting forgotten, but, because I, I do think the color coding is good, but it, there's a lot of, a lot of orange and blue, and it's hard to tell if it's, if it should be.
Time frame.
Yeah, if, if it's blue, but it, it's really close, or if it's orange and we should worry about it not being implemented too soon.
Yep.
And then every time we look at this, the pilot agreement jumps out at me because it's got nothing in it. And I, I know we talked about that, Lynn, it's June 2023 seems to be when we have to talk about another rate or evaluation change. Just don't want to let that fall by the wayside. But that's what got me thinking on the dates, that if we have a, a goal in mind and, and a date in mind, I think that can be helpful. Dan?
Yeah, so that was actually the one I wanted to talk about briefly too. So I noticed it's, it's Bay Path, but we also have a lot of other organizations in town. And have we thought about reaching out for a pilot with other organizations in town instead of just Bay Path as well?
Like the churches?
I'm, I'm open to.
You can reach out, but they may not reach back.
We have, we have a lot of other organizations in, in town, right?
We do.
They can say no, but I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask. We provide a lot of services for some of these other organizations and we could be leaving money on the table, so.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, I, I guess my concern is that, that this is now a couple of years old and, and we, I, you know, I think, at least I can think of two or three things I'd love to see added to this, but they're my, my special projects. It may not be the Select Board's special projects, and yet I see on here some things that I didn't even know, you know, were important to the Select Board, yet they, they've got on here and then they're, they're being done. And, and so, you know, I, I guess the, the process still concerns me of how do we get things on here? And how do we prioritize them? I guess as Josh indicated, that, that, you know, should each of the four of us come up with two or three of our most important things and see if they become important to anybody else on this, this group? Because it seems that anything that's on your list to do certainly gets on, gets on this thing, which is fine. But, you know, you know, I, I would have put, I would have put some things ahead of some of the things that have already been done.
I, I think that if we, and we see this, what, quarterly?
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so if we see a quarterly, you want to add something, we talk about it now. We can talk, we, when they know what's coming up, so put it on the agenda in advance that we're going to add it. That's always, the way I think of this is, we, we want to know what's going on. We want to know what Lynn's office is doing. And if there is something that we want to keep on task, then adding it is good. If it seems to be, if it's so niche that we can talk about it, but I, I'd be hard pressed to think of something we don't want to put on here, even if it becomes a low priority, just so we know it's, it's still happening.
Yeah, I'd like to support Mark's comments, you know, because I, I think it would be nice if we could come up with stuff. But again, usually, like the four of us might say, yeah, this is a good idea, but there also could be some complications. And it's almost like we should have some way of vetting them, you know, having some way to work and say, like, this is a good thing to consider putting on here. Maybe, you know, talk to other parties who would be involved and so forth.
Well, that's a good reason to put it on the agenda then, so other people can, can see it and know that that's what we're thinking about putting on.
So what if I take a crack at modifying this a little bit and bring it back to you for the second meeting in December? Because I don't think I'll have time to do it before now, now, in your next meeting. And then what I would like to do too is move the items off that have been completed, put them on another tab. Because I think a lot of this has been, to Mark's point, some of this has been two years now, but I think some of these goals take two years to see.
Sure.
It come to fruition. So I can reformat it and we can take a fresh look at it. And if you have stuff you want to send in, I can put your name next to it and we can at least have it on one document.
Okay.
So Lynn, why don't we take the ones that are completed, that are green, put them on a different tab in those spreadsheet that's just completed and you put down the date it's complete? So we kind of keep a, a list of what we've done.
But having a, like a preliminary, like a, not a waiting list, but just, you know, saying, these are the things we, we could talk about at the board and then we'd have to develop further before they actually got on this list. That would be another way to do it.
Here, another tab.
Yep.
Yeah, I, that, yeah, it, it, just talking it out, the four of us, along with Lynn, can, we can fine tune it at our meetings.
Yep.
I think that would be a, a nice addition, so.
Good. All right. Anything else on the goals tonight? Okay, so we're moving on to the approval of the Select Board Rules and Orders, or the Traffic Rules and Orders. Go ahead, Lynn.
So what I'm really looking for you to do tonight is just approve what's in front of you so that we get it in the new format. And then we can discuss, this should probably be a goal. Then we can discuss how we're going to tackle some of the updates that are needed, whether it's, you know, a working group or, or we do, you know, a big meeting just going through all of this. But ultimately, tonight's goal, I was hoping, is you, you vote it in the new format and then we start working on the updates that are needed.
Just on that point, while we're, while I'm thinking of it, for the updates, is there, there's a traffic calming committee?
Yes.
Right, but that's, is that town employees?
Yes, so there's a, there's, there's a traffic working group. It goes by many different names. But the Select Board has a traffic calming policy. That's the only reference to this group. So at some point, I will bring you a policy that clarifies what the intent of this group is and who's on it. But it's an internal group made up of the Town Manager, police, fire sometimes, and DPW.
Okay, so they're not necessarily, they wouldn't necessarily help us tackling these?
They could. We could. We, that group could go through these and bring you back a full recommendation on changes. That might be a good approach to take. That group is how I, we knew that this document even existed.
So, and this one, it says 360-3, it says officers to direct traffic. And it says that officers would be designated by the Chief of Police. It, it doesn't mention anything. One of the things that's been happening for a while is that sheriffs have been coming into the town to direct traffic for construction projects, and that probably should be addressed in this paragraph.
But we're not changing that now.
But that's duty, that's duty officers when, I, I think the process is it's offered first to Long Meadow officers and when they're not available or they, you know, then it goes outside to the next group and the next group. But I think the first choice is always to internal.
Well, but they might want to mention that that happens.
The, the, I, I mean, I, I, the whole thing is a mess in terms of content.
Just like town meeting, we're not going to change this now. It's just, because if once it gets in E-code, it will be much easier to make the changes. And to do it now before it goes to E-code would just invite a lot of difficulty. So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept, oh, what is it? Accept the renumbering of regulations and, actually, no, how am I putting this? To move these into E-code.
You can just, I, I think it's just approval of the Select Board Rules and Orders related to traffic and renumbering, or adopt, adopt the changes recommended by general code.
These are, so these are all the changes. There's nothing substantive. It's just like at the, the town meeting.
Correct. This is putting it in the new format, but then the other document is actually what you're approving, which is accepting the renumbering, continuation of existing provisions. There are amendments that are, they're recommending, but they're not, they're not substantive changes. They're minor. And then changing reference to the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, changing references to the State Department of Public Works, the DPW, changing the title of the Superintendent of Streets to the Director of Public Works. And then there's an amendment that's being made, there's a typo that says indication to speed, where it should say indication to proceed. So those are the changes.
Okay. I saw a move that we accept the number of regulations, renumbering of regulations, the continuation of existing provisions, and the changes in previously adopted regulations as given to us by E-code.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I would just like to say, I, I guess I want to be sure, because these are, you know, our rules. And, and so if President, if residents say, well, we're just saying the rules that sheriffs are going to be directing traffic in our town. I mean, I just want to make sure that this is going to get in here at some point. And I don't, I'm not sure if we're, what we're approving, because I, I don't want to prove something that's not correct yet.
Well, are it then.
So that's what exists already.
Huh?
What you're, what you're reading, what you read previously, that's what exists already.
This is what exists, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no change to that.
And we're approving this, we're accepting this again then? Because we must have approved this at some point.
The continuation of existing provisions. These haven't been changed in decades. They're a mess, so.
But the motion doesn't sound like we're accepting, the, the motion doesn't say that we're, we're going to move forward to, to change these and update them. It said, according to some regulations, huh?
We're going to put them in the goals. We're going to, we're going to address this, absolutely.
Okay, is, I just want to make sure I got it right.
No, I, you're right. Like I said, this is a mess. And I fully intend for us to, to revisit it soon, but we want to make sure we're doing it right. And I, I don't think.
So we're going to see these again for a final vote?
Well, no, they're, they're already in place now, it's just the only place they are are in the LPD in a binder.
Yeah.
We're going to make it so they're online, and then we can address it.
Well, I would rather fix them before we approve anything, that's my opinion, I wouldn't want to approve something that is not current in actually what's going on, I mean, this is just one issue, and I, you know, it's just, you know, but it, but I wouldn't want to approve anything that's not been updated, I'd want us to update it and then put it online, that's my opinion.
I mean, I was essentially going to say what Tom is saying, the question is, I don't know the process for doing this, and more importantly, my comment is that a lot of this says, indicates the ways to make changes, and we haven't followed them, I mean, I can start with the one-way street in front of the community house, none of the process that sets one-way streets was followed, to update that, because I assumed to update these rules, because it was a select board rule that had one-way streets, it would have required a vote of the select board, you know, similarly with, you know, we got a flashing light, I know, at Maple and, and Shake, I mean, there's, I can, I got a list of 50 things, so how do we get the tail and the dog sequenced here, because to approve, we can change the format of lousy rules, but unless we schedule a time certain to update these or process to update them, we're just going to end up with continuing lousy rules, I mean, I, frankly, I, there was a lot of stuff done in the last three, four, five, six years ago that should never have been done.
I agree, but the rules are in place now, I just don't, I see what you're saying, I see what you're both saying, but I think this is the first step, and I, if we want to move to put it, I don't even know how we do it, but we put it on the goals, we just talked about doing it, that's going to be on our goals, we talked about the traffic group looking at it, I think that's, that's the next step, but I, I think this is the first step, if we don't want to do it, we want to make the changes before, I think it adds a layer of difficulty, and it makes E-code's job harder, and it's something we can address after.
So, so in that vein, I'd like to order a friendly amendment that says, we amend this to say, and they will be updated by February 28, 2023.
Okay, it's a big day in the town, I'm sure.
Why is it a big day?
It's our election day.
February 28?
Yes.
Well, if we vote on it.
If there's a preliminary.
Anyway, I...
What do you want to make it more?
Sorry, I'm wrong, you're right, that's...
So let's vote on the amendment.
He hasn't been seconded.
Oh, I will second him.
Okay, but a discussion on the...
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I would like to see something in place, I guess the other question I have is, if this has already been approved by some board in the past, why can't it just be put online the way it is, I mean, why do we have to even vote on it?
Well, we are adopting some changes now, if we vote on that, that's a good question.
But, but that's the whole thing, Tom, this is a, this is a select board document, so the fact is that in order to make any changes, the select board has to do it, if we just, say, just make the changes, we're back to where my complaint is, that people are just making changes to the traffic systems without going through the proper authorities, so I'm, I'm, I agree with you, it's, it's pretty dumb to approve something that we know is, is wrong, but if we need to get it in the format, let's do that, set a date certain to get it fixed up and fix it up by that, that's why I offered the amendment.
Lynn, is that a realistic date, you think, for us to tackle this?
Figures 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything further in the amendment? All right, so we'll vote on the amendment, all those in favor? Okay, any further discussion on the motion itself as amended? All right, all those in favor? All right, both unanimous. Okay, we'll now open the public hearing for the application for new liquor licenses, Barbecue Billy's LLC doing business as Fletcher's Barbecue Shop and Steakhouse.
I'm, I'm move we open, I'm move we open the hearing?
A second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, hi, Bill.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good, you want to introduce yourself, please?
My name is William Fletcher, spelled by Bill, owner of Fletcher's Barbecue Shop and Steakhouse.
Great, and, let's see, everything in order, Mike?
Yep, it seems, it seems as it is.
Okay.
Obviously, for the purposes of the public media agenda, some of the information was redacted, but could always be viewed by the board in our office.
Right.
But yeah, everything is in order, as submitted.
Okay, any questions from the board? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I guess my question is, how many people do you intend to employ to serve liquor, who will be served, who will be authorized to serve liquor?
On a shift or in total?
In total.
I haven't done all of the calculations on that, and a big part of that is...
Is it two or is it 30?
Twenty, let's say, on the high end.
Okay, I mean, that's the kind of, yeah, I'm not going to hold you to it, I just wanted to understand if we're talking about two people, you know, or four people, you know, one person per shift, or...
No, you know, we'll have five servers in the dining room, and probably two bartenders on a busy night, and so you figure that out, 20 sounds, you know, potentially.
That's sufficient answer, thank you.
Bill, are you the manager of your shop, or your restaurant in New York?
Yep.
And is it the same setup in New York, the manager of record takes place of the entity, so you were responsible?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have any disciplinary issues in New York?
Not one.
And how long were you open for in New York?
A decade.
Oh, great, okay, impressive, Tom?
Yeah, I just, you know, in terms of safety issues, the big concern I always bring up when we open a new establishment, and it's going to be 30 seats at a bar, so that's a lot of drinking going on, is, is to be sure, you know, we always talk about underage drinking, but the big thing is to have people, I don't want people leaving there drunk and driving down Route 5, and, you know, getting on the highway, but even, but being in town, so, you know, just, as far as my membership of the board, that's, that's the issue, you know, and if I hear, you know, we, you know, we can suspend license and all that, but we don't want to hear about it, we don't want it to happen.
And I want all my customers to come back, I don't want them eating drunk.
Yeah, but, just so we understand each other on that end, thank you.
And the 30-bar seat thing, if you think what that really is, is the front half of the restaurant is the bar area.
Okay.
But it's eight seats at the bar, and then a bunch of high tops, what I envision is, is most everybody eating there, you know, it is the bar area, but
Yeah.
I don't really think of this establishment as a, as like a watering hole.
I, I wondered, do you get 30 seats at a bar, and I've been in that restaurant enough times to know the layout, so, okay, that makes a lot more sense, thank you.
Bill, are you tips trained?
I am not, but I'm working on that.
Okay, and you plan on getting everyone who will be serving tips trained?
Absolutely, yep.
Mark?
No, I was just going to say, we, we have established in Long Meadow that tips or safe serve training is a requirement, Bob, he'll tell you, is a requirement for people working in these establishments, we ask that you do that.
When are you planning on opening?
I know, it's the number one...
That has nothing to do with this hearing. You can answer that.
I'm telling everyone this spring, I'm really hoping for February, it would be great to be open for the Super Bowl, if we could, we could do that, but it's a construction thing, they're making a ton of progress, but you can suddenly hit a month delay on a certain item, you know.
Sure. I had legitimate licensing reasons for asking that.
Right.
Okay.
Before we close, I give you the same speech I've given everybody, comes before us, the town of Long Meadow takes our liquor license and liquor license process very seriously, we do and will do compliance checks, if you haven't been told that, our police have that as part of their responsibility, we hope we never see you in here again for, because of a compliance check, but I wanted to let you know that we do take it seriously, we've had some issues in our town, as you may or may not have read recently, with underage drinking, whether, and not necessarily at establishments, but, but we know our, our high school kids are pretty active, sometimes, and we want to make sure that they're not getting their alcohol from, from our establishments, so, you know, I welcome you to town as a business, hope you're super successful, but don't want to see you here as a, in terms of liquor licenses, so that's, that's my comment, I've said that to everybody who comes through here, and I hope to never see you again.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Other than in your, in your restaurant.
Mr. Williams, if I may, there's one question we typically ask, just to make sure that the hours of operation align with our policies and what we have in place, so what are your proposed hours of operation?
Did I list it on the application?
It probably is, but as of right now, I'm just, might be just popping over it.
I mean, what's difficult for me as a new resident is understanding what the, what the audience is, you know, wants, or is available, I mean, it's not a late-night place, I'd like for folks to be able to finish watching a Sox game, like, that's sort of the approach, but on weekends, I, I can't imagine being open past 10.
Your landlord will tell you the streets roll up here in town pretty, pretty early, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you can keep it open, but nobody's going to be there.
Yeah, exactly, I don't want to pay staff to know.
And for the most part, I mean, it, it's not necessarily Long Meadow residents, it becomes a, hopefully, it'll become a regional, you know, destination, and so it's not just Long Meadow residents who will come there, but it'll be other people, but we hopefully have you, you know, we do have set, set time limits on our, our licenses, I think it's...
I think it's still 10:00 P.M.
10:00 P.M., right?
And what are the times, the opening operation?
Friday, and then on the weekends, I think it's, it's later.
It's later on the weekends, I have to confirm, I have this document, it just kind of disappeared on me.
Yeah, I think weekdays, we were thinking noon to nine, and then Friday and Saturday, noon to 10.
Okay, great.
Any other questions from the board? I'm move to close the...
I'm move we close the, the public hearing.
Sorry?
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor, any further discussion, all those in favor, unanimous? Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
I have some, Josh, some comments and questions and discussion, and I, I guess the, it has nothing to do specifically with the, with the liquor license, per se, but it mostly had to do with the, with the lease and a few other things, you guys probably may want to stay, we're going to vote tonight.
Oh, no, you just said, oh, well, I was...
No, we didn't vote, yeah, that was just closed the hearing.
They have to vote in open session.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and the question is, because as I read through the lease, it had a lot to do with the parking, the parking lot, parking lot is, is, is public property, it's Long, town of Long Meadow property, and I, I'm just wondering, I'm glad that the landlord's here, because he may be able to respond if he has a better memory or longer term memory, than some of us, and that is, is there, is there a memorandum of understanding or some kind of operation with the operation of that parking lot in terms of liability? It's, it's town, it is a town parking lot, it is not, you know, owned by the landlord, per se, some of it is, obviously, but much...
Some of it is, some of it is town.
Right, some of it's the town property, and I frankly, not...
Like, when we, when we repave?
Bobby, can you come up, just so people can hear?
Hi, I'm Robert Rinaldi.
Yeah.
77 Ridge Road.
That's just for the, for the LCTV, so people can hear what you're saying, so the issue is, is, you know, because as we read, I read through the lease, it had a lot to do with liability and things like that, and I, you know, I'm thinking, what's the town's liability, you know, you guys plow it, you take care of it, all this kind of...
We...
Right, right, but have we ever, is there any kind of a agreement, a written agreement on that, or is it just being, kind of being done, and, and should there be some kind of agreement that protects the town?
And protects us.
And protects you, you as well?
There's nothing in writing currently, I know our insurance, Joseph Rinaldi also from the same, I know our insurance policy does cover the parking lot, since it is used, I don't know specifically if there was ever an incident legally, who would be responsible, and no, there's not a, to my knowledge, there's not any type of agreement or between the town and between, and us, but you're describing it to the same understanding as us, which is we pave it, re-stripe it, we insure it, we plow it, but no, if that's something that the town would like to discuss, we're always open to it.
Lynn, I, I'd like to see the town do that, I think there, we, we went through this with six, I think it's 694 Long Meadow Street, is that the one with the, that used to be the bank that's now Colvest Realty, we went through that when they did some...
By Bliss.
No, no, it's, it's on, it's on Long Meadow Street, Colvest.
When they redid that, did you two up some?
Yeah, there is an agree, yes, there was an agreement put together because of what was done.
So years ago, when we, we repaved and everything, we discussed, you know, this...
Yeah, but it was probably a handshake agreement kind of thing, but, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned that some, somebody falls, somebody gets hurt, there's a car, whatever it is, it's, it's town property, you know, you know, obviously, my goal on this side of the table is indemnify the town against anything that happens by somebody who's going into one of those, those establishments, and that's all I just wanted to bring up, I think, you know, I'd, I'd like to see something put together, obviously, it doesn't have to be done prior to us voting on this, this liquor license, I was just using this as an excuse to, to make the comment, because I, I recognize that it's one of only three locations in town where it's a, it's a public parking lot.
They're probably all on Meadow Street.
Right, they're all on Long Meadow Street, right, but, but it, you know, it, it is a public parking lot, so in theory, somebody could park there and take the bus, they could park there all day and take the bus, nobody does that, but in theory, they could do that, it's a public parking lot, so I, I just would like to request that the town manager get together with whoever it is over the next, next period of time, and kind of make sure that there are no liability issues for the town, and that you folks believe that you're protected as well, and we do whatever we need to do, I'm not looking for...
Sure, I'd be happy to reach out to the town manager, we can, if, if you already have like a template set up with the Colvest group, we can review it, and if it's, works for us, we can use that as a template.
Work for them, it'll probably work for us, and it work for you?
Whatever, I mean, it may, may very well be, I know there was something there.
Yes.
I don't think, were you here, Lynn, when we were doing this?
With Colvest, I was, yes.
Anyway, that, just, that was my only, I mean, I, I've got no comments about the liquor license, that's fine, I just saw that as an issue we wanted to bring up.
I'd be happy to send you an email.
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Second. Go ahead.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, best of luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next in our public hearings, we have a petition for a Verizon job number 1AV, I'm sorry, 1A5VV8M.
Congratulations.
Moving someone in, Mike?
Yep. Moving in a representative now, Mr. Don Bonner, Boner, apologize if I pronounced your name wrong, can you just unmute your mic, please?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, there you go.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Why don't you go ahead and, actually, first, let me ask, Mr. Gold sent some questions to Verizon, did you receive those in advance of the hearing?
If you're asking me the answers, no, I have not seen anything from, from anybody at the town of Colvest.
Okay, that, it went to Albert Bissett Jr.
Al is on vacation this week.
Okay, that's, that's unfortunate.
That's unfortunate.
Is there anything I could potentially help with?
Well, I'll, Josh, if I can, I'll, I'll read you the letter.
Yeah.
But it asks for, it asked for information that I was hoping he'd be prepared to, to speak, speak to, I sent this on, I believe I sent this on Friday, yeah, this was sent on Friday, November 18th at 10:50 a.m., and it said, Mr. Dear Mr. Bissett, the town of Long Meadows and receipt of Verizon petition 1A5VV8M, requesting installation of an additional pole on the east side of Long Meadow Street, a hearing for consideration of this petition is scheduled to be held on Monday, November 21st, 2022, in anticipation of that hearing, in order that you be prepared and that the select board be best able to be in petition, in a position to approve that petition at that time, I ask that you be prepared to respond to the following questions, which I'll ask at that time, number one, why exactly is this supposed additional pole needed, what changes have occurred, or what observations have been, been determined about the existing pole to make it necessary to install a new pole to provide anchor support? Number two, there are currently private electrical and other utility lines that cross Long Meadow Street from the designated pole at the corner of Longview Drive and Route 5 to the home on the east side of Long Meadow Street, I'm concerned that your petition allows for you to place the... utility lines that cross Long Meadow Street from the designated pole at the corner of Longview Drive and Route 5 to the home on the east side of Long Meadow Street. I'm concerned that your petition allows for you, you to place the guide wire across Long Meadow Street at a height that is lower than the height of those wires and the height of the guide wire proposed by Verizon to connect the existing pole on the west side of Long Meadow Street to the proposed new pole on the east side of Long Meadow Street. So I'm asking for what the height of the guide wire would be across Route 5. Number three, there's currently a streetlight pole on the east side of Long Meadow Street that appears to be near the location you proposed to install a new pole. Please be prepared to comment on the location of the pole proposed in, in this petition in rel- in relation to that streetlamp pole. And finally, please be prepared to comment on the installation of any pole to ground guide wires that you intend to install to anchor this or support the proposed new pole on the east side of Route 5. There is currently a sidewalk on that side of the street and a wide tree belt between the sidewalk and the roadway, and I'm interested in knowing what additional anchors will be on, in the ground as part of the installation of that proposed anchor pole. Just also wanted to ma- write a comment that the, the petition refers to us as the Board of Selectmen. We are in fact the Select Board of the Town of Long Meadow, and ask that you make that, that correction. And it's, finally, I close by saying, thank you for your cooperation, being prepared to respond to these questions at the Monday, November 21st meeting at the Long Meadow Select Board. I'm sending these questions to you in advance of the meeting. In order that you'll be prepared to answer questions, I prefer not to create an adversarial situation where requested information cannot be provided. So that was out, went out on Friday at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, there's quite a bit there.
And that's why I sent that out in advance.
Uh, if it's easier, we can also forward the email to you, so you can see it as you go.
Uh, sure. You, I, that would be, I would appreciate that absolutely. Um, I can tell you, uh, well, Al was also out on Friday. He was gone, he's gone for the week, um, for Thanksgiving vacation. Um, I, as to the four que- I believe there's four questions, correct?
Yes.
Um, one is, one is why, what's the purpose of the pole? Uh, two is the guide wire height? Uh, three is, there appears to be a light pole nearby, so why? Um, and the fourth question is, uh, if there's a ground guide wire, then, um, what's the purpose? Or what's the distance? What's the length? I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
All, all of the above, correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Boner, I just, I just forwarded you the email as well.
I, I, I will, I will not be able to answer all of those right now. I apologize. Um, the only one I can answer for sure is the number two, the guide wire, the height. It's 18 feet. It has to be a minimum of 18 feet over a roadway, uh, unless it's a special roadway, like a highway or something like that, that's a little bit higher. Um, as, as to the other ones, um, especially, especially the first one, um, the purpose of it, this was, um, requested by, uh, Eversource, I believe. Um, so I, I would have to reach out to them. Bottom line is, I don't want to waste your time here. Uh, I would like to formally, respectfully request that we can postpone this hearing, so I can get you some answers, um, on Al's behalf, or ask Al to do it, uh, when he gets back, um, cause I don't want to waste any more of your time, cause I'm not gonna be able to get you the exact answers you're gonna want here tonight.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Uh, before we move on with that, I just.
You can discuss.
Wanted to ask about this question. Eversource asked Verizon to place a pole? Is that?
So, so Josh, my understanding is, we got 1,400 poles or something in town, okay? Of, some portion of them are owned by Verizon, some portion by Eversource. They have an agreement that, that, you know, all the poles have everybody's wires on them, although Verizon may get it. So that if it's a Verizon-owned pole and Eversource wants to do something on it, they ask Verizon. If it's a, you know, if it's an Eversource-owned pole and Verizon wants to do something on it, they ask Eversource. The owner of the pole comes to us for the re, for the modification, even though they don't know why, why they want it. You know, they just know that Eversource asked for it. And that's, that's been the history of this over and over again.
Makes sense if it's already up there.
Right, right. But, but Eversource won't come to us to put in a pole because it's a Verizon pole, even though they want it.
Um, the, the reason for that is, um, Verizon is, what's called, it's their pole set area. Long Meadow is in their pole set area. So any pole that need to go up in Long Meadow have to go through Verizon. And any poles that need to come down, come down through, um, Eversource. Uh, so that's the way it works. And that's why, that's why we're petitioning for this pole. Uh, we petitioned for all poles in Long Meadow. So, um, whether or not it's our, uh, uh, whether or not we wanted it, if, if Eversource would want it, then, um, that's why we would be petitioning, because it's our pole set area, if that helps.
It does help. I was just confused, because the one pole I've done since I got on here was an Eversource petition. So, but, okay.
Mr. Von- Bonner, this is Mark Gold again. I just have a, a quick question, cause I, I went out and looked at the, the pole. And the pole i- is actually, i- it's the, the corner of a right angle turn of, of wires. So the wires come south on Route 5, and then they turn onto Long, Longview Street, right at that pole. So there is clearly a, a force pulling the pole, if you will, inward toward that 90-degree angle. And for whatever reason, it seems to me that somebody wants a guide wire to go across the street to pull the pole the opposite way, so it doesn't fall down. Didn't look to me like the pole was falling down or tilting or anything like that. But I will tell you that one of my questions was going to be, because personally, I'm not a, a fan of additional pole placements in town. We're trying to eliminate poles, not add more poles into town, is if in fact the, the reason for this was because there's a, it's called a momentum of, of, you know, force trying to work against this, and you need to, you know, counter that with a, a guide wire and a pole on the other side, why don't we replace this pole with a concrete pole instead of a, a wooden one that won't bend under a momentum of force and has more strength to it? And that would be, is if, as long as you're going back, that's one of the things I'd add to ask you about, is why do we have to, you know, always put a, a guide pole across the street and pull this, to support this pole from falling in, if you will, when we can just put in a better pole? Uh, you know, much of the country has concrete or steel poles, and if, if that's what it would take, would certainly prevent us from having to put a pole on the, uh, on, on the east side of Long Meadow Street, Route 5, which has no poles, uh, at least no poles with wires on them. So I just wanted to put that out there to, so you can understand where at least I'm coming from. Don't know where the rest of the select board is.
Uh, second on the motion?
Second.
Uh, I think it's, uh, continuation of the hearing, not to close the hearing. I think that was.
Yeah, that's what Tom said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's what Tom said. Um, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you. We didn't mean to put you on the spot. In fact, Mark tried not to. Um, but I appreciate you coming back, uh, at a later date with more information. So we'll wait to hear from Al when he's available and, uh, has, has answers to all of Mark's questions.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. I, I, I can understand your questioning and, and line of questioning. Um, I will get to what I can, and, uh, I will deem to do so by the time we meet next.
All right.
And I assume I'll hear from, I think it was Mike Farberry.
Yep, I'll, I'll reach out to you as we coordinate that.
Very good.
All right.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Josh, if I just could, and I apologize to Tom and Dan, but open meeting laws, I can't send everybody what I send out, because.
Yeah.
So I send it to Josh and Mike, but I.
Sometimes I get a, an email from you.
But I was just trying to prevent from ha- what happened from happening.
Sure, understood.
Didn't do it, but, thanks.
Uh, last on old business, we have Eversource Western Mass Natural Gas Pipeline update and letter to EFSP. Uh, so that, this is on the agenda for, uh, twofold reasons. Um, as Mr. Levine spoke about earlier, the, uh, EFSP has set hearings, uh, for just a few weeks for the public hearing, um, and it's virtual. And, uh, the, I heard from some residents asking us to push that back. And now also the written comments are due January 2nd. Um, so, uh, Andrea Chason drafted a letter, and I, uh, made some changes to it to, with the hopes of, um, pleading our case to the EFSP to have some site visits and to have some in-person, uh, two in-person hearings. And, uh, most importantly, I think, to change the dates, uh, cause it's soon and it's gonna be hard for people to make. On January 2nd, I think it's gonna be really hard for public comments to get through. Um, so the letter, as it's on the agenda, is, uh, as I wrote it, and I, hoping just given the timeline that we can vote on tonight, if.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the, the chair to send out that letter, as, as drafted.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Oh, Mark?
No, no.
Okay, all is in favor? Yeah, all right, unanimous?
Thanks, Josh. Thank you, Josh, for talking.
And I thank you to Andrea and Gary for collaborating on that. Um, then the second issue on here, um, Lynn and I spoke about this, that there is, if the hearing does happen on the 14th or whenever it happens, uh, there's a lot of constituencies in town and committees who want to comment. And we thought it would be good to have, uh, a, I guess, along with Attorney Canoff, a, a steering committee meeting, just so everyone is not overlapping and saying the same thing, and also that everyone is saying factual and helpful things at the hearing. Um, so we're hoping to set a meeting, uh, we, I think we could do it if it was on the, uh, the 5th, it would, it'd be kind of cutting it pretty close. So hoping to have that meeting, and then at our December 5th, uh, just have the board vote on the position that's going to be taken at the, at the hearing. Um, so I think the first thing to do is, uh, appoint one of us to be on that committee, or, or whatever it's going to be.
Think we call it a working group?
Working group, thank you, not a committee. Uh, to go to that working group to coordinate with the other committees and groups on, on honing our message. Um, I, as always, I point to Dan, but I'm, I'm also happy to do this one, uh, unless anybody else feels, feels strongly about it.
Josh, my understanding, so, I guess, I was just gonna say legally, but it's not legal law. It's open meeting law legally. This is a town manager working group, so it doesn't require open meeting laws. It doesn't require minutes to be kept. It's just a discussion.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yep.
That was my understanding as well.
Okay, that's fine. I, I just wanted to clarify that.
But then, I know, I would bring anything to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we vote on, and the other committees would have to do that as well? Okay, so that would all be adopted positions. Um, so the next step would just be me reaching out to, to chair, uh, committees?
Yep.
Okay.
Go forward.
Would it be possible for, and I'm, I'm not really sure, but if we could notify the abutters of if we're gonna do a site visit, just to make sure that they're aware that, that they're actually gonna be showing up, um, in person? Because a lot of the people that I've talked to in that area, I mean, there's some elderly folks that, that, you know, aren't online, or they might not be tuned in, but they, they do care about the issue. So could we do like a mailer to these households?
Um, for, for what site visit?
If we, if they're, if they're gonna visit, um, by Hazardville where the site would be for the station?
Um, I don't know if that would come from us. I, it may be something that the EFSP sends out.
Because we know, um, Eversource isn't gonna be sending it out.
Right. Um, I don't know if we would send it out. Um, I guess we would have to talk about that.
It's not saying pro or against. It's just to notify the folks that, you know, there's gonna be a visit in your backyard, potentially.
Yeah. Um, I can ask Attorney Canoff when that is scheduled for, or if there is one scheduled.
Right now, there is no site visit scheduled.
Right, so, yeah, so if we do get a site visit, I think it would be appropriate to notify the, the residents in that area.
Okay, let me find out.
Uh, next on, we're on, moving on to new business. Collective Bargain Agreement Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 406. Lynn?
Yes. Um, you, so attached to the agenda is the tentative agreement that has been ratified by the Police Local 406. This is the remaining, uh, bargaining unit that I was still in negotiations with. Uh, so you'll see it covers everything from wages to longevity, uh, to shift differential, educational incentives. There was a tweak to the outside details. Juneteenth holiday was added. Um, as we did with the other bargaining units, we removed incentive days, which have been an absolute nightmare to try to track. And in place of that, added a personal day in exchange. Uh, and, and now require everyone to participate in direct deposit. And then, um, acceptance of eight policies from the Town Personnel Policy Manual, where their contract has been historically silent. And so the union did ratify this on the 14th, and it is here for you tonight, um, for discussion and vote. Uh, the changes, if approved, will be incorporated into the successor contract and then posted to the town website, just as all of our contracts are.
All right, uh, any discussion? Mark?
Yeah, Lynn, huh, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that went into it, cause I had done this once way back when. And, you know, and, and don't want to minimize what I'll call the non-monetary issues, because those are usually the toughest ones. But my question really comes down to, from the monetary point of view, how does this fit in with what we just heard from Paul Pasterzik and the plan and our budgeting, at least for the next, for the three-year life of this, of this proposal, agreement?
Yep. Um, so I spent a great deal of time this summer costing this out, every possible scenario. Um, and was very careful to make sure that what we were agreeing to or proposing was not going to upend anything in one particular fiscal year. So it's fairly balanced across all three fiscal years. Um, we also have that warrant article that Paul was referring to earlier, uh, in June, at, or I'm sorry, at the Maytown meeting, where we have that separate warrant article. That is where we pull the funding for the current fiscal year, um, to pay for these wage increases. And then it, what's implemented will then be built into the FY '24 budget. Um, so I think I'm answering your question, I hope, where I was very careful to make sure that we weren't going to see this massive spike in FY '25, or, um, as we hit the end of the contract.
Thank you. I, I think it's worthwhile, Josh, just commenting that the three years, this is a, the current fiscal year, cause the contract actually expired at the end of last June. So it's the current fiscal year we're in, plus two more fiscal '23, '24, '25. And the base salary increases are 2.5, 2.5, and 2.5% over those three years. And I think people should, should hear that, that is keeping with our prop two and a half controls.
Can we?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we approve the, well, it's a tentative agreement, but approve, approve the proposal of the union contract with Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 406, as proposed.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Excuse me.
All right, thank you for your hard work on that, Lynn. Uh, next up, we have the, uh, a proposed flag and banner display, uh, policy. Um, Mark, you want to talk about this?
Sure. The, the, I'm not sure about the, yeah, the flag and banner display. I, I came up. up with this, I sent a note to Josh and Lynn, because I read in the Boston Globe a couple weeks ago, that the city of Boston signed a pretty substantial settlement with an organization because they declined to fly their flag. And Boston had a policy of flying flags, and this group came along, and I guess the Boston City Council, for some reason, whether they found them objectionable or just decided not to do it, said no, they went to court and cost the city of Boston a good deal of money. From time to time, we have also been asked to fly flags, and, you know, in the past, we said, "Yeah, okay, I guess," but I think it opened my eyes that, you know, if somebody came along, we didn't wanna fly their flag, once you start saying to anybody, "You can fly their flag," it's very, it's, you cannot say to somebody else, you can't, you can't pick and choose, and so I thought that we ought to have a policy that says, you know, we put up the American flag, maybe we put up the Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag on our flagpoles, and that's it. And then I looked at it and I said, "Well, if it's a flag and banners, you know, how about the high school, you know, awards or that fly in the gymnasium, those banners that are posted there?" And so, it allows for exceptions for the school committee to make exceptions in their buildings for banners and also for other one-time things that may happen in schools, whether it's a football game or something like that. But I think that it's probably something we ought to do, as much as I hate saying we need to do it to protect the town, because you can't be selective and nowadays, you never know who's gonna come ask you to fly their flag.
So Lynn, how does the veteran, or the Veterans Memorial Flags, how does that fit in?
So, to the best of my knowledge, the one flag that's on the green right now that would not be in compliance with this policy as written is the prisoner of war flag. I think that's the only one that would not be, so there could, could or should be some conversation about that, and whether or not the board would wanna carve out that area.
So, that's the green, is that a Parks and Recreation area that allowed that to be put up?
The, well, it's the memorial, so I'm not sure, I don't believe Parks and Rec permits anything for the memorial, but the green itself, it does.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Lynn, if we carved out that one area that, you know, veteran-related flags, because, you know, the prisoner of war flag is something we didn't see until Vietnam, you know, and then people started saying, you know, "There's a lot of prisoners of war, we don't wanna forget them," and so we started to see them in some towns, cities, there's a POW sticker on every police vehicle. So, you know, letting veterans, you know, having that flagpole, you know, in the area that we've dedicated to veterans, to have, you know, that the select board would decide if it would be okay to have a flag there that, you know, whatever the veterans, because this could change, you know, the, most Vietnam vets, you know, they're, the youngest ones are in their 60s, you know, but, you know, I think that we should fly that flag there for at least another 20, 25 years, you know, before we discard it. And there might be some other flag that would come down the road at some point, that would be related to veterans, and I think that would, that would be a good way to solve that problem, carving that out. I don't know what other people think.
Well, I think if we do leave it open to exceptions down the road, that's kind of the problem that we're trying to address in the first place, but I'm happy to carve out, POW flag, I know I've been seeing them, growing Easton Meadow, there's one in the center of town, as long as I remember. I would be okay with a specific carve-out for that flag.
Again, I, I understand the comments, but I'm concerned that we're doing exactly the problem is, if we carve that out, is somebody gonna come back and say, "Well, you carved out for them, why aren't you carving it out for us?" I think we need to say something in the neighborhood of, other than flags that are flying on the date this was accepted. In other words, we're not carving it out because it's a POW flag, we're carving it out because we're implementing from this date forward. I, I really think that if you start picking and choosing, and I support the flag, I'm not getting away from that, Lynn sent me a quick note, and I sent back, I understand that's a problem, but if, if you start carving out, that's, that's the situation you get into, you're not, you're not allowed to do that, you either let all the flags in, or you let none of the flags in, other than, I think we can do it, and obviously, I'm not an attorney, but you are, Josh, you know, can we do it, any, any flag not flying, you know, before the date this is accepted?
I don't know what's flying now.
Well, it was flying yesterday.
Right, and I should clarify, to my, to, when I meant carve out, I meant carve out the Veterans Memorial itself, that, that nothing else should fly there, except veterans-approved flags.
Right.
I can't imagine we would ever take a flag down there and put something up for any other type of event.
That's exactly where we were asked to fly flags, though, on the green.
Okay, I've been asked at Town Hall, but never for the green, and I, my response has always been, nothing ever flies there but veteran.
Fine, I mean, that's a good way to do it, I hadn't thought about that, but I-
Well, I'm not picturing this as carving out, I'm saying, here's the three flags that can fly, and I think that that is, that's been our policy from now going forward. But I don't know if the veterans wanna fly another flag, I guess that would be the issue.
Right. The thing is that, if you read the news, we could be on the verge of World War III, and, and what if there's a brand-new flag that comes out, you know, they might say, "Forget the POW flag, we wanna fly this new flag in 20 years from now or 30 years from now," and so I don't wanna lock us in to that either, because the reality is that that-
It's not a law, it's a policy.
The only reason there's a POW flag is because of Vietnam.
But it's-
Otherwise, there wouldn't be one.
Tom, but it's not a law, it's a policy, I mean, let, let, select for 20 years from now, change the policy, you know, but do it in a legal manner, I'm just, again, the intent here is, you know, don't come to us with requests to fly XYZ flag, whether it's the Arbor Day flag, or some group that we really don't wanna have their flag flying, we're not gonna deal with it, you know, and frankly, I think it was Arbor Day and some other things like that, where we've been asked to fly the flags. You know, but, but once you, once you say yes, you can't say no, and that's the problem, because there, I can see there are flags we may not wanna fly, and in this day and age, people will ask us to fly those flags.
I guess, I think that if we carve out that flagpole that has flags that are specifically, you know, the American flag and a veteran-approved flag, like the POW flag, then, because in 20 years from now, it may be even harder for a select board to approve a change in the flags, because then they'll say, "Well, we're, you know, we're gonna sue the select board members because they didn't approve, you know, our flag, they approved a veterans' flag, or competing veterans' group."
Right, and that's the problem. What, you know, I'm gonna say, you said when a veterans' group approves it, what veterans' group?
Well-
You know, I mean-
Luckily, we only have one in town that goes through our-
You were doing this for the next 30 years, or 20 years, or 10 years.
We have a veterans' agent, and it would have to come through that sort of-
I mean, that's why, as tough as this is, it's, you know, I mean, I'm willing to say, you know, Lynn, can you take this back and with our, with our town attorney, because he had had some comments about the exception for the schools, that the school, that we refer that to the school committee and other things, maybe let's fix this up, come back with it, it's something that, that's got that carve-out or whatever it is.
I'd like to add, rather than carve out, I'd like to add POW flag, I think it's those three flags, I think that that is, if we hear from, that there are other flags that are, did you have a comment?
Would you like one?
Uh, could, oh, I don't know, I don't wanna get into another boondoggle, what do you think, Mark?
You have to recognize-
Yeah, it's gonna be a mess.
Why don't you send us, send us comments, otherwise.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would have a real problem removing the POW MIA flag that just, and I think we all agree, I mean, that's something, it just, especially coming from being at the Veterans Day event and just hearing the stories and, I don't know, it just doesn't sit-
Yeah, I think we just have to find a-
Doesn't sit.
A way to do it, that's all. And I think Jesse can do that for us, or turn-
And furthermore, I think this would be a good opportunity, I mean, we're creating a DEI committee as well, and I think this could be something that we could get their input as, you know, one of the first items that they could take a look at, I think they should be weighing in on this, I think the veterans' groups should be weighing in on this as well, so I think, I'd like to personally just table this to get more information.
I'd say, I don't think that the DI group should weigh in.
Yeah, I don't either.
That's where, if you read the, what happened in Boston, it's happening in other places, Town Spring Court, that's, when you start saying, "These are good causes," and these aren't, that's where you get into trouble, and that's-
I mean, it's an opinion that they can, that they could make and-
But, yeah, but having-
It would affect, it could affect their flag that they wanna fly, it could affect another group's flag in town as well.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should ever make that decision, that's why, that's kind of the point of this.
Because who do you leave out?
Yeah.
This thing is, you can't leave anyone out.
If you include anybody, you have to include everybody.
We just asked to get feedback from the veterans' group as well.
Doesn't mean we're gonna listen to it, I mean, doesn't mean we're gonna, we can legally include it, I don't mean that directly.
Feedback from one group, but not feedback from another group.
Nothing, they can send feedback, I don't-
I believe that the issue, at least from what I read about the Boston case, was that they had no written policy or internal guidance, and they had approved 284 prior requests, and the first one they denied was based on a religious, they claimed it was religious.
And they got sued.
Yeah, $250,000 in Boston.
That's a lot.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know that it, I think it was just that there was no written policy, not that you couldn't fly cultural flags or anything like that, it was that they had no guidelines on it.
You know, this was the first attempt, I mean, you know, we, we've had policies that go through 13 or 14 iterations over several years, but as Lynn said, I think we need a policy, and then if it's not working, we can modify the policy, and if it, you know, but we need a policy that allows us to say, you know, what we do, and frankly, gives Lynn and Barry Jarvis and whoever else is there, you know, maybe Lena, the cover to say, "I'm sorry, but the select board policy doesn't allow me to, to approve that," and move from there, and if people don't like it, they'll, they'll go some, you know, we'll take a look at it down the road. But I don't wanna be in a position where we say yes, as we potentially have, and then get sued when we find out there's some group coming along we don't like.
We could be right all day and not afford to, be able to afford to defend ourselves, and that's, we don't really have a lot of movement on that. All right, well, so we have some, we'll keep working on it.
Yeah.
Next up on the agenda is the use of the town seal policy.
Oh, yeah.
I think this came along on the scene.
Yeah, so this one came up a while ago, and I had this kinda just sitting in a draft folder, there has been, been several instances since I joined the town where I've noticed the town seal being used by private residents or private groups without approval of any entity, mainly the select board, and so that, I drafted a policy but didn't bring it forward at that time, and thought that if we were talking about the flag, we should talk about the town seal, especially because it sticks out to me that it gives the impression to people that it's a town-sponsored, town-approved, or official town document, and I, typically in municipalities, you need approval of a governing body in order to use a town or city seal. So I took a crack at drafting one, likely could use some cleanup language, it was modeled after another city, so it's here in front of you to start discussion about.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, this one seems very straightforward to me. My only question is if there's anything that I, we're missing, but it's not, it's included but not limited to, so I, if the policy is get approval, that seems pretty straightforward to me.
Lynn, this sounds ridiculous, but if we were a private company, we would trademark that seal and therefore protect it, you know, seriously, and I know trademarks sometimes cost a lot of money, but they have all kinds of rules about having to use them in interstate commerce and all kinds of things, but is that something we ought to consider doing, whether it's trademarking or just putting a copyright sign next to the thing, so that at least people know that it's protected? And I'll leave that to you, I'm not gonna, I don't propose that we have to solve that here, but-
Well, there's more, if you copyright it, you have more power, you know, if you try to say, "You can't use it because it's a copyrighted thing."
Yeah, but I think the issue may be more trademark than copyright, Tom, but I'm not sure, I'm not as sure of the difference as I, as I ought to be, but I know that there's a difference.
Or Town Council should advise us on what's the best thing to do, because I, I agree, you know, we, we wanna protect that image, it's just like, you know, you look at banks, you know, if you can't use that Bank of America symbol, just anything that goes out, you know, they're not gonna go for that.
This is like anything else, how would we enforce it anyway? How much we can do besides say, "Don't do that," but at least we can have a policy.
You get somebody, send them a cease and desist letter, I've gotten plenty of those about, or I've sent out plenty of those about trademarks that have been violated.
You're an interesting guy, Mark.
Well, no, actually, I was in, you know, we used to have a big trademark organization, we'd send out cease and desist letters, and people would cease and desist, stop using it.
Has this been run by Jesse?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I think that's worth doing as well, maybe he'll have some ideas on if there's anything, anyway, we can protect it easily.
I think it's a great idea, I think he'll do it.
Good amount of people do reach out to request use, and a lot of people don't as well.
Okay.
Good. That's the end of my small business, no, I'm just kidding.
Meaning, we just see it pop up in some places, where I go, "Where'd that come from?"
Yep.
I'd like to reuse the fire department's Angry Beaver logo, that's a good one.
If that one's not trademarked, then you're free to use that.
All right, next up on the, anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Next up, we have the apartment calendar slash fiscal year fees review. Lynn, you wanna talk about this?
Sure, so I did look through this list, the bulk of these fees are set by state law, so there's not a lot of wiggle room, any areas that were included in a bylaw would have been flagged by general code when they did their initial look-through, and some of them were changed, or will be changed later, if they were thought to be too much of a financial change for it to pass a town meeting, some of those were related to planning board filings. But as I look through this list here, there's not a lot of room in some of these to make any changes.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, and Dan, just your comments, some haven't been changed in a long time, most of those, we don't collect anything on them, so, I mean, the ones that we do, I think we've reviewed, but for the most part, a lot of these things, you know, I mean, there's a teakettle fee, I have no clue if we've, you know, crazy things like that, so anyways, you know, I, for the most part, we haven't looked at, haven't looked at them because we didn't need to.
Josh-
Go ahead, Tom.
I noticed one here, this is kinda interesting, it talks about the dog licenses, and it says that we charge $20 for a dog license, and we get 2,000, a little over $2,000 for people who buy a license, and then the late fee is $15, and we get $3,000 in late fees. I guess, I had ventured the idea that we should probably charge $15 for the dog license and $20 for the late fee, sorta like when you go to a concert, you know, you buy tickets in advance, you get a lower price, you're late, that's $20, but this might be a way to start to get people to get their license on time, instead of having to pay, you know, I guess in some ways, they'd be paying the same amount, but the people who get their license on time would be paying less, but the people who get them late, it wouldn't change anything for them, does that make sense? I don't know if I get any support on that.
Well, the, the bulk of the fees are actually for the $10 one, the neutered and spayed.
Yeah, but this is- Yeah, but this is for dog licenses, the top one's twenty, and the late fee's fifteen.
Right, but neutered and spayed is cheaper, so, but I wonder, ten bucks, is that, how much do we pay for the little tags? And then we mail them out?
They're not much, and they pay their postage. Mike just pointed out, this spreadsheet is not as current as it should be, and the late fee is actually thirty dollars. It was changed in two thousand and sixteen.
So the late fee is thirty.
There you go.
So is that why the number's so much higher?
Well, the neuter and spay, that's the bulk of the dog.
No, not spay, I'm talking about just the licenses.
No, that's, the neuter and spay is for dog licenses, for dogs that have been neutered or spayed. The dog, the one above that that you're looking at, those are for intact dogs. Meaning they haven't been neutered or spayed. So there's a higher rate that you pay if your dog is not neutered or spayed.
Okay, yeah.
And there's a lesser charge if your dog is, so we break it into two categories. So that seventeen thousand dollar amount, that's, the bulk of the dogs are neutered or spayed that are licensed in town.
All right, so the, all right, so I guess that's, so it is lower for the people who have a neutered and spayed dog.
Yes.
And then it's, the male, the regular license, if dog is not neutered or spayed, is twenty, and then it's thirty for the late fee?
Yes.
Okay. The only other question I have is, I'm surprised, I hadn't noticed this before, but we, sporting licenses, we, at the town hall, you could buy a hunting license, fishing?
You used to be able to, the state then went to online hunting and fishing licenses. I don't know if they're issued out of here anymore.
Okay.
A lot of town clerks changed that, there are a lot of work, and you don't get very much money for them. You're capped out on what you're allowed to charge.
Oh, yeah.
The state gets all the money, and you can charge like a dollar administrative.
That's what it says on here, one dollar plus state fee.
Right, but I didn't even know we sold them, I didn't sell anything.
Cities and towns stopped processing them when the state started doing online transactions for them. I'm not sure what we're doing here.
Okay, yeah. Well, if, if, if people can get, it's convenient for some folks to be able to just get it, because otherwise, I mean, if you don't have a computer, you'd have to go to like Dick's Sporting Goods, I guess that would be the closest. There might be some other places in Enfield closer, but it's, it's a nice service for people. It'd be good to know if we actually do it, and then let people know. I know we don't make any money on it, though, but sometimes we're just public servants.
So as Paul brought up before, probably the only thing we would have control over here that actually makes money is the building, all the permits.
Some, a lot of them are capped by state law.
Wow, okay.
So how do we know which ones we can control, I suppose, and potentially change some of the rates?
So that chart there tells you authorization, tells you general law, or a C M R, select board vote. So you'd have to go cross-reference the general law to see if it caps it.
Well, all the, there's nothing, over on the building permits, there's nothing under authorization.
I'll have to double-check them.
Yeah, this, this list has been around for a while.
That would just be, because I do wonder, people are going to build in town regardless. And our build inspector, we had to hire other people because our build inspector was so busy. I wonder if there is, I don't know what the reasonable rate would be, but it seems like some of these could be a lot of work. And it, it's not, just on an hourly basis, it's maybe not what you would expect it to be.
Yep.
Josh, these say they were last updated in two thousand and twelve, and I know that we've done it since then.
Well, it was last reviewed twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay.
The fee was last changed in twenty twelve, so four years ago, we looked at it and said, no, that's reasonable. And it may still be reasonable, but I, that is something, that seems to me that the place most ripe for, for changes. Even if they're modest changes, because like I said, people are going to build and are going to make additions, and a modest change could add up. Especially in a year where we're not talking about a huge gap that we need to make up.
Why don't I send this out to departments that have fees on here and ask them to do an inventory, or a survey of area communities to see, make sure we're benchmarking to, we're not going to triple our price. And I can come back to you before the end of the calendar year with an update.
That's good.
When it says, you know, gas permit, it's fifty-five dollars, is that, that includes an inspection, so it's a work requirement, one inspection, so it's not only issuing the policy, or issuing the permit, but going out another time to inspect it. It seems like a pretty cheap, there's a lot like that. Okay, yeah, I think that would be helpful, everyone might say, yeah, we're at the top of the range already, but that's a good thing to know.
It's good timing, I have department head meeting tomorrow, so I'll bring this up.
One of the things that came up, so it's, there's a fee here for Long Meadow days, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, right? And, you know, since we've made this change, that there's alcohol served there, I mean, they're, they're making a lot of money. You start selling alcohol, there's a huge profit. And someone said, well, you know, if, because we could end up with having two or three different alcohol vendors at the next Long Meadow days, you know. And someone said, well, whatever you, what people are charged is rent, you know, for that. You know, alcohol distributors should pay a higher rate because they're making a much higher profit. You know, if you get a little, you have your table and yours, and you sell your crafts, and you've got little Christmas trees, you know, you, you, you know, you'd be lucky if you make, you know, a couple hundred bucks, you know. If you had three hundred dollar day, you'd do that. Well, when you look at people paying ten dollars, I don't know how much a beer was, you guys, how much they.
Eight bucks, probably.
Yeah, eight bucks a beer, and you have a line of, you know, a hundred people, that's a lot of money. And so, you know, we, so I guess in some ways, we could, we should think about that, you know. Maybe there should be a different fee for vendors of alcohol at Long Meadow days versus people who have a little crafts thing.
Wasn't that, it was actually a separate permit, wasn't it just happened to be on the same day?
Yes, since it was a one-day liquor license permit.
Since it was on town property.
So.
That, I wonder if that's a capped fee. That would, that would be interesting.
One-day liquor license, I don't know.
I believe it is.
I mean, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's worth thinking about, just because it's, you know, when you look at how much people would make on, on that same day at a regular, established place where they're paying rent and, you know, and what they make it on the, on the green, you know, I don't see why we shouldn't get a higher rate from them, because before, you know, I mean, you could end up having twenty different alcohol vendors, you're going to get people selling spirits, you know, it's going to.
But we have the authority to deny that. Tom, we have the authority to deny that, number one, and number two, I mean, you know, the theory is that, that there's a permit to use the green that's, you know, for arts and crafts. And the liquor license was totally separate. I don't know how you say, well, if you have liquor served on the green, your, your permit to use the green is, in fact, they weren't on the green. If I recall, they were actually on private property. It was a one-day liquor license, they couldn't do it on town land.
They were, they looked on the green to me.
No, they were across the street, that's.
They were on.
There's no alcohol. But nobody can make a profit on the green, actually, but there's no alcohol on the green.
So it was across the street, next to the.
What's his name's property, yeah.
By the community house?
Mike, you're on the microphone.
The house that's right next to him.
Yeah, the zoom just.
Like on the, popped up.
Okay, so it was on a, so, so it isn't on the, but I guess I just want to throw that out, that I, I think maybe we should look at a liquor license for an outdoor festival, you know, should be at a much higher rate than a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I mean, they make that after, you know, less than ten histers.
So you can set the fee for liquor, short-term liquor licenses. The general law gives you that authority.
Can we have differing rates for different, like the community center, or sorry, the adult center versus?
Yes, it says, the fees for licenses granted under this section shall be fixed from time to time by the local licensing authorities and need not be uniform.
That's a good idea, Tom.
Well, thank you. You know, because I really don't like the idea of having more drinking in town. But at least we should benefit in some way, because they are definitely benefiting, you know. I mean, they, they said the lines were unbelievable, so, I didn't go over there.
Well, the barbecue line was.
Well, the barbecue line was good, well, now, you know, we have a, we just approved the barbecue at town, so. Hopefully, it'll still be a long line, so.
All right, so we'll bring this back, unless there's anything else now?
I'm just trying to, again, figure out, is there an easy way to see what rates we can control versus the state? Is it just based on the authorization? If it's blank, then the, the select board can, or is it more?
Sounds like that was the intention, but because there's a cap line, fee limit, if any, and there's very few in there.
I wish we could just get a list of what could be in our purview.
Yes.
And then we could maybe divide it up amongst the group even, and, you know, tackle it that way.
Yeah, we all inherited this list, Mike and I, and then now you four have inherited this list, so it, we, there's a lot of room for improvement.
All right, and finally, tonight, we, there has been a petition to hold a special election. It has been, the petition has been certified, and so I spoke with Lynn about this, and Lynn, and Tim checked with the state?
Yes, so.
So what is the procedure?
Late today, both Tim and I had a conversation with the elections division, and I have uploaded a document that was sent, that we was prepared late today after we had that conversation and got the calendar approved by the elections division. So, and the town clerk has provided me the email that precedes this. The, they did get the two hundred and forty-three signatures, so it's over what the two hundred signatures that were required. And the election calendar has been approved by the elections division, so now it's in front of the select board to set the election, which would be February twenty-eighth, and a preliminary on January thirty-first, if more than two people pull out papers.
So we are, we are receiving the petition, we don't act on it. We're acting on setting the election, is.
Yes.
Do we have to set it for that date? Is it, do we have a timeline for when we, when it was accepted versus certified?
I think that's the earliest date when you have to set.
Right, I, I don't know if there's a timeline in which you need to act on it, that I don't know.
Can you remind me what the statute is?
There's several, there's.
I have the water condition.
It's forty-one, section ten.
Forty-one, ten.
Is the primary one. Not primary election, but primary. I think it's forty-one, or, yeah, it's forty-one.
What, Mass General Law?
Yeah.
Such requests shall be filed with them not less than one hundred days prior.
Yeah, if we could set any date, we could set something like June fourteenth.
That's what I'm wondering, I, I think we're, there must be something, we're going beyond if we do that.
Yeah.
Man, I'm not, I'm not in the business of trying to disenfranchise anyone, I just want to make sure that we're giving ourselves enough time to do everything. And so that, you mentioned before that the date I said was with a preliminary election. Whether or not there's a preliminary election, we're setting the date now, the preliminary doesn't change it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a forty-one, ten, doesn't have dates on it.
No, that has a date for when you cannot have the election, based on the annual election, but it's silent on everything else.
We could table setting the date until we have more clarification.
We could, but I'm, I'm worried that tabling in itself is, if we're waiting too long to act on it. And I really, I don't want us to misstep here. Do we have any information on that, Lynn?
In terms of when you receive the notice that they've received enough signatures?
Right.
How long you have to set the election?
Right.
No, I don't have that information.
I, I have an email from Kathy Ingram in January of two thousand and twelve, the last time we did this. It was the last time we had to do this, Christine Swanson, and it says, I spoke directly with Michelle Tesonary, who's the director of legal counsel for the elections division. According to Michelle, Mass General Law forty-one, ten allows for a special town election to be called one of two ways. Select board, if the select board chooses to call a special election, they can do so anytime, and I won't read that. If the select board decides not to call a special town election and chooses to wait for the annual town election, two hundred registered voters of the town can petition them to do so, as long as the petition is filed not less than a hundred days prior to the annual town election. Okay, so in that date, the latest, you know, sometime in March, depending on our election. The special election can then take place within the hundred, hundred-day town timeframe. If the select board decides to hold a special election, would be, no, she just says what date she was recommending back then. But there's no requirements of the date.
So if you got a petition a hundred and one days before the special election, or before the annual election, then you'd have to hold a special election.
Right.
Well, no, because you, the date of it would be within a hundred days.
That's what it said, it said, well, I think it says the petition. If the petition is received prior to a hundred days. Provided such request is filed with him or him not less than one hundred days prior to the date of the next annual election. So you'd have to have a special petition ten days before that.
Right, and after that, it's up to us, and the, and the issue is that we've got to go back and then look at that whole issue of timing, of how many days you have to, you know, allow for somebody to get the petitions, how many days for returning petitions, and we've got to do that for a preliminary election, and time to print the ballots for a secondary election. We've got to allow for.
Well, that's what, isn't that what we have from Tim here?
Right.
Yes.
Right, and, and the issue is, it, it comes up to ninety-two days is the minimum in the town of Long Meadow to call elections. So we can't call it any sooner than ninety-two days from today, and we can call it theoretically anytime after that, I guess.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead.
I don't see any reason to, to wait on this, because if we are going to have a special election, we might as well just do it. And not bump, the, the more we wait, the more we bump up against the annual town meeting. And if we're going to do this, and whatever our feelings on it, we've made all that clear, I think it behooves us to, to do it in a timely manner, and as fast as we can. And as fast as we can in a, in a reasonable amount of time so we get things done, and that's what this schedule is.
Well, I, I think, you know, one of the things, as I look at this schedule, you know, November twenty-eighth, so after Thanksgiving, and then by December thirteenth, would that put some people at a disadvantage? would that put some people at a disadvantage? You know? Are there people that are, have a primary responsibility to their family to prepare for the holidays and shop and all that stuff? And would they be a disadvantage running during this time of the year? Specifically women, but in general. You know? Because it's tough to have something like this during the holidays. You know, it's, it's right in the middle of the deadline to, to file your nomination papers is, is the, is the holidays.
Well, I got all my-
Christmas.
I got, I got all my signatures at a holiday party.
Well, that's, you know, but, but if you had to be in the kitchen cooking, you might not have those all done. So I don't, I just don't want to put anyone at a disadvantage because of the timing on this. I, you know, we have to be open to that, so.
I don't feel comfortable making that, factoring that into our determination, that that's just me.
Yeah. I, I mean, in some ways, it would be better to do it after the holidays. You know, I just think it gives everyone an even platform. I think it's, I don't, I don't really think it's fair to do it during the Christmas holidays and Hanukkah holidays to do all this. I don't think it's fair. I think we should do it after the holidays, set up a schedule like this, especially if we're not restrained. We've looked at all the laws, we could run it by town council. But I just, you know, it's gonna come out. I mean, this is Thanksgiving, and then you have, everyone, it's just not fair for some people in our community.
And then we're, the election would then be at the end of March, or even a little bit later. And then there's two months before the town election, which I think is one of the reasons we discussed not having a, a special election. But if we're making it, compounding the problem by pushing back, I, I don't like, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
Well, we either compound it one way or another. Either we could make it unfair to the women in the community, or we make it, you know, we're cutting it close to the end of the year. If they're gonna get a couple months on the board, they're gonna get a couple months on the board, I, I mean-
I don't, I don't know if it's just women shopping and cooking in town.
No, I don't, I think there's men who do that also, but I'm saying, I, you know, it's a very busy time. People who, if someone's an accountant and they have the end of the year, and they have to do all these, you know, financing, if they have to, you know, do all the stuff for business and stuff, I, I just, you know, I think there's a lot of different reasons that people, that some people would be a disadvantage, you know, during this time of the year. So.
Can I just ask a question? What, what's the difference between December 13th, the last day to submit nominating papers? With the, with, it says with two registrars, I assume it means with the registrar. I get, I understand the last day to submit nominating paper. But December 27th says deadline for the registrar to file nominating papers with the town clerk?
Yes.
What does that mean? Who's our registrars? I don't, I don't understand.
Almost every city and town in the Commonwealth, it's one in the same. There is one community, it's not, it's not us, but the law differentiates between the town clerk and the registrars.
I thought we had a board of registrars.
We do. You can pick them up from the town clerk and never turn them in for the board of registrars.
So what does the board of registrars do if it's, the clerk is the same?
They will certify certain things. In this case, the town clerk is certifying the signatures. There's a separate section that the registrar sign.
Okay. But, but for purposes, my question is, we're telling people that they have to take out nominating papers beginning November 28th and return them December 13th. Everything else is internal, right? And if more than three people take out nominating papers, there will be a preliminary election on, on January 31st. And if only two people, one or two people return nominating papers, there will be a final election on February 28th. That's what people need to understand. And everything other than that is the last day to register to vote or to request a, a vote-by-mail ballot. But it's really December, November 28th to get nominating papers available, December 13th to return them, January 31st preliminary election, February 28th, final election. That's what we're looking for for dates. Right? So, based on that, Tom, it's November 28th, which is after Thanksgiving. December 13th, it's two weeks to submit, to get signatures. I don't know how people are gonna say get signatures, but they'll get signatures in two weeks. And return them in December 13th.
I think the only place you have leeway- is extending out how long they have to give you signatures.
Oh, I see.
Not give you signatures. My understanding is, as soon as the signatures were received and the town clerk sends it to you to set an election, nomination papers need to be made available fairly quickly, which is why it's essentially a day and a half that they would be made available in, because Thursday and Friday's a holiday, so they'd be available Monday. So I think you could extend out at least that 14-day between December 13th, I'm sorry, November 28th and December 13th, you could kick that out longer. And then I'd have to go back and work with Tim and the Elections Division on the rest of the calendar.
Well, I, I'd feel comfortable if people had more time. You know, because it says, yeah, 14, at least 14 days is the, is the Mass General Law. But if we extended that a little further into December, that would, I think that would be more fair to people. Because, you know, there's just a lot going on in December, and then-
The, the bigger question is, is that, for me, Tom? People return ballots on December 13th. It says deadline for the registrars to file the papers. That means the, the signatures are all verified, okay? Can people verify signatures when four of those days are holidays? In other words, there, it, it says December 13th to December 27th, because I'm sure the law says two weeks. But in fact, of those two weeks, there's only really one week and one day of actual town offices being open. That's, to me, the issue.
Right.
You know, and, and should we be giving our town clerk more time to verify the signatures on petitions than literally four days? Because of-
I don't think you have any room on that. I think it's always two weeks, I think, and it's 35 days before the election. Not to complicate things, but there was a special act that was approved by the, by the town meeting in 1988 that is in conflict with state law. So this, the Chapter 53, Section 10 is what the state law is. We are not following what the town meeting vote was because it's not accurate. Or it was accurate at the time, it hasn't kept pace with the law. The law requires 35 days before the election, the town meeting vote was 28 days. This is in favor of more time, yeah.
Well, maybe have 30 weeks for, to get papers in? Are you comfortable with that as a compromise, Tom?
I'd be comfortable with that, yeah. I mean, I don't wanna, I, 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 yeah, we should hold the election.
Yes.
But I just want to be fair to everybody, and so what would a date look like then?
So they would have to work on-
So I think we'd almost have to do it now, because I think you-
Okay.
I just don't know how long you have before you can set an election, once a petition is filed. I, I don't know that answer. Given that conversation with the Elections Division, that nomination papers need to be made available almost immediately, I would think that you don't have a lot of time to wait. But I, I just don't know that for certain. So if you kicked it out a week, December 13th would move to the 20th. The 27th date would move to the 3rd. Two days after would be the 5th. And then, um, 35 days after the 3rd would be-
Moves everything out a week to March 6th, March 7th, then. Makes the preliminary election, instead of, instead of January 31st, preliminary election becomes February 7th.
Yeah.
And the final election, instead of becoming March, uh, February 28th, becomes March 7th. Right?
Does you have one?
Yeah. You can, yeah, you can go with that.
Well, I, I don't want to push, push off setting a date, both because we have a petition and we have to act on it, but just fairness to everyone, we get this, get this thing started. So if we can, as long as we can add on that week, and I, from what I know of the law, it seems like we can, as long as we're acting on it today, I think we should do that. So with, like, see a motion for that?
So this, so we're gonna change it to the last day to submit nominating papers will be December 20th?
Yeah, well, I could make that a motion, if you'd like, that I, I believe we should just change the special election calendar to the last day to submit nomination papers to December 20th.
And accept the petition as amended?
And then adjust all the dates after that.
Yeah, but I think we just should let people know, that means the special election is scheduled for March 7th, 2023, and if needed, a preliminary election will be February 7th, one, one month, four weeks before, which is what Tim had suggested.
And this'll go out in the town managers' report, everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I just had a quick question. So after that election, the select, new Select Board member has to be, not seated or sworn in, right?
He has to be sworn in the next day.
Next day, and then when would that, when would the first meeting be? Do we know, would that be, that be March?
The election's March-
Well, at that time of year, it's probably the next day because of budget season.
Probably have a special meeting with finance committee and departments.
There's, you usually do all your public hearings with town departments and finance committee right around that time.
Our next schedule-
March 6th, March 20th.
Is March 20th. March 20th.
Yep.
Yeah. 6th and 20th.
So really, this person will be serving for-
Five meetings.
10 weeks.
Five meetings?
Right.
Five meetings?
Yeah.
I mean, we have to obviously follow the petition.
Yep, ship is sailed.
But I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear on, this election is going to seat somebody for literally five meetings.
Yep.
And potentially could have a preliminary election, right? And then we could have the, the general election as well. So we potentially could have two elections, and the person who wins will be serving for five meetings going into the June.
Right, because the elec, the election is through 2013, 2023, June 2023. The seat is up for reelection. Now the, yeah, we're gonna have that election anyway, because there's a school committee election then anyway. That's gonna say, can't do anything about it.
All right, anything else? All those in favor? And that brings us to correspondence, if anyone, any comments?
Yeah, there was something there that I thought was worth commenting about.
Was the maintain, don't gain challenge supposed to get on here, Mike?
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Was the ma, maintain, don't gain challenge-
You know what, there was a bunch of stuff that came, it's like we're emailing, I was scrambling around on Thursday getting stuff in here, so.
Trying to tell us something.
People in town gotta know what's going on.
It was sent an email, so I just, it probably got thrown in there.
No, I guess that was fine.
Okay. Somebody like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, goodnight, everyone, thank you.